...zoning as well as the location outside of the primary development boundary. Looking at the surrounding character and the lot sizes, this area is consistent, generally speaking, with the rural residential land use. The rural residential land use is described as, again, I would reiterate, it's of one unit per two acres and greater, so it's generally served by well and septic lots. And we'll show you the utility system in coming slides. The low-density residential, again, would be up to four units per acre. I would note that the associated rezoning proposes one unit per 1.5 acres. This is a map, and I hope everyone can see it. There's an awful lot going on here. This is really an analysis of the primary development boundary in relation to the existing water and sewer infrastructure, public water and sewer infrastructure that exists. I would clarify that regardless of a comprehensive plan amendment, we have learned that the Spring Grove project area can be served by public water. The sewer is ultimately the issue due to gravity flow and topography. So this requested amendment is specific to public sewer, again, due to topography, as, and the project-specific request requires a pump station to serve it. Again, I want to reiterate and graphically show that the area in yellow here is all that's subject to this particular comprehensive plan amendment request tonight. The Deer Run subdivision just to the north is also, or actually Ridge Crest, has sewer services that is, have been enabled due to gravity flow and the ability to do so. Unfortunately, Spring Grove is not able to do that due to topography and necessitating extra infrastructure. This raised two major concerns within our analysis, considering the utilities. Regarding the single-project-based pump station, first of all, utilities department has raised concern that enabling a single utility pump station to serve one project on the outskirts of the primary development area sets a potential precedent for similar requests in the future that can string up along the primary development area whereby we essentially see a proliferation of these type of pump stations. This runs contrary to utilities' efforts over the last 15, 18 years, which have been looking to remove pump stations from the system and consolidate them down into regional systems. As a result of that, we have identified as an alternative from the utilities department that, in order to effectively create a regional system, this area that's outlined in blue, and I've, we've also recently learned can be further expanded, would be a means to serve as a regionally-based pump station as opposed to having these precedent-setting single pump stations for projects. The issue that has been raised with this is, in our report, is you have a scenario where you have a single project of approximately 186 acres resulting in a much larger expansion of the primary development area to serve a regional pump station whereby changing the character that has been historically established in the comprehensive plan. The second outcome, this much larger blue area, is not what's for consideration this evening. That would be a larger county concern that would have to be addressed separately as part of a comprehensive plan amendment process, but it is worthy of consideration. I would note on this map, and we do have utilities department here this evening, just to explain a bit of their efforts to, and Brent, if you would be willing to step up, just in addressing these single pump stations that have been removed in an effort to expand to regional ones.
Essentially, we have a drainage area, the Massaponix Creek, that allows everything to go to one central point. And as our subdivision developed over the years, we were able to connect all of our subdivision together to get to eliminate the small pump stations into the major interceptor. The other choice is to go out of the drainage area and have a regional pump station, such as the Wishner Pump Station, which takes care of the whole Courthouse area. Even that's going to drain eventually on down to the Poe-Nye Confluence, where we'll have one major Nye interceptor. The question kind of posed here was, do we extend that Nye interceptor up to serve this project out of the intended primary development area? And that makes logical sense from a utility standpoint, or stop it where it is, which is what we've been directed to do at this point, following the comp plan. And keep in mind, we have always matched this comprehensive plan to a utility master plan. So we'd get a, all this gravity sewer going to central points and having regional facilities where we have less mechanics to take care of less facilities, better chance of not having overflows. And I found it interesting to look at this map. I have three little pump stations right there that we had over the years. One was Crown Grant, I guess, up there. That wasn't in service more than a couple of months before we had an opportunity to take it offline, cost of the county $20,000. The second circle was Trails. That was just 20 or 30 houses on a pump station that we had to take over, that we had to spend about $300,000 to abandon to get gravity service out. And the last one was just a, that was Trails. The middle one up was, when Leeds Park came in, we could connect all the pieces together. But up here in a disjointed place, I don't have a place to connect to unless I build an interceptor up. And the challenge here for the interceptor up is I've got Rock under 208. I've got the Nye River, the little dwarf wedge muscles to worry about, the wetlands. So I'm looking at 1.4 plus Rock, about $2 million to get up there to take it offline. And I'd say, and if you're going to do a comprehensive plan amendment, we'd like to air a water sewer master plan to match all that. So I'm just saying from a utility perspective, if you're going to go up in this area, let's do it right. If not, stop it there. So I just don't want a disjointed piece that I've got to pay for later. Well, utility ratepayers to pay for later to take offline. But if we're going to do this right, we put it in a master, in our CIP and plan to develop the whole area. Ideally, you start from the bottom up, then each developer leapfrog up to build your interceptor if you're going to identify an area without the utility ratepayers paying, with each subdivision paying. And that's the, that's the best way to do it. In this case, we're starting at the top of the drainage area, giving a much harder way to do that.
So let me ask you a question here. When you talk about the provision of sewer services being restricted to the primary development district, I believe that's what you commented a moment ago?
Yes, sir.
So how did Bloomsbury and Westridge and these other communities get it since they don't appear to be in the primary settlement district?
We allow gravity sewer out. If you have a parcel that's gravity sewered away into our existing sewer system, it's okay. And Ridge Crest, as it's called, Ridge Crest is on top of the ridge. Smith Station Road is a ridge road where the top of the drainage area, if you go over the ridge a little bit, you can get a couple houses, that's where it stops. Anything beyond that becomes a problem requiring a pump station.
So the question isn't the utility service so much as it is the type of service to be because of the need for a potentially expensive pumping station?
That's correct. Once, once you, I mean, it's real nice to put sewer in a manhole, let it just dribble on down to the sewer plant. Otherwise, you've got to have a pump, duplex pump, skater, mechanics visit weekly, and if it ever stops, motor ever stops, you've got sewer to ground. And we, and I'm not saying a sewer line is perfect either because we have to keep those clean too, but it's much easier to keep sewer contained in a gravity sewer line than a pump that has to run all the time. And the worst thing is to start conflating of small pump stations for multiple subdivisions because once you start going at the drainage area, every subdivision becomes a pump station. And if it starts at 10 houses or 100 houses or 200, but what I would like to, when they go out of the primary development area, would like to do it at the regional facility, like the Courthouse area was all done on Wishner Pump Station. And even that's going to become a bigger regional pump station later.
Is it in this proposal that the pump station be owned and operated by the utilities department or privately?
It's in our construction standards and our, and our utility ordinance. These pump stations, we don't want a property owner association maintaining a pump station.
Right.
It's in our best, it's in our best interest of the county that we maintain it, it is required that we take it over.
Right, and you're getting rid of all these small ones because of the operation maintenance expense?
Overall, it's better. One pump station's not going to kill us.
Right.
But if I keep adding to them, we've spent a lot of money.
All the small ones.
And his history is, we're going to eventually take them offline, first chance we get.
So I realize this is kind of missing, missing the, or mixing the two applications for this evening, but under the, could this then be rezoned and have public water but not public sewers with the one and a half acre lots? Good, okay, thank you.
I believe, just for the question, I believe the question was, can we repeat? It was, it was, yes, the, the project can be sewer, provided with public water, but it would not be able to be provided public sewer.
I think, may I ask a question here? The question is, I believe, yeah, can a rezoning take place and it go and have sewer, not public sewer, but private sewer with that many homes? Because there's a setback that has to be required for each resident, right?
Right. Realistically, they, they probably would not be able to get the 124 units that they're proposing. It would be a lesser number, but they could rezone and have public water and private septic.
But not with that many homes?
Most likely not.
I didn't think so. That's the reason I wanted to clarify that. That's right.
The minimum, if I understand the zoning ordinance correctly, the minimum square feet for a lot is much less for a public water sewer hookup than it is for just water. Therefore, that affects a number of lots.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right, so moving on with the presentation, I wanted to cover some of the activity that happened back in 2013 in November, where the county engaged in the comprehensive plan update, the most recent comprehensive plan update, and between, through work of the comprehensive plan advisory working groups, the utilities department, citizens input, and additional, the planning commission and board of supervisors input, there were two major expansions that occurred back in 2013 to the primary development boundary. They were approved on November 14th of 2013. The first expansion of the primary development boundary occurred along Plank Road, extending down into the Saw Hill area. These, this area had prior been identified as rural residential, and as a result of the expansion, through that working process and public hearing process, the land use designations there had changed to low-density residential, as is proposed here. This expansion represents roughly 1,700 acres. The second major one that I would point to that happened in 2013 was the stretch of land between Massaponix Church Road and Courthouse Road, extending from Smith Station Road down to the Nye River. As a result of this, the employment center land use designation was expanded as well as low-density residential was added, where rural residential had been prior. For those familiar with the area, this is an area where recent rezoning activity occurred, a project called Cortland Park along Smith Station Road, as well as the distribution center that was recently announced in this area. Considering these two expansions as the existing primary development boundary, in October 2nd, 2015, analysis of unbuilt residential projects within the primary development boundary found 2,559 single-family detached units unbuilt, 1,913 single-family attached units unbuilt, and over 5,000 multifamily units that had yet been constructed. Staff notes additional residential and mixed-use projects are currently under review that could lead to more unit count, and the primary development, as it is now, just recently expanded, frankly, is not built out. It's not bursting at the seams, and we, at this point, we don't see the impetus to, to really have to grow it even more, further expanding it outward. Those numbers that I reported reflect unbuilt by right subdivisions and units enabled via rezoning process. They do not include subdivisions less than 20 lots or family and annual exempt divisions, which tend to be smaller numbers.
Before you leave that slide, could I ask a question? For the benefit of the public, could you point out where the, on this map, roughly where the applicant property is?
Sure. The applicant property is actually off of this map view. You can see Bloom, you can see Courthouse Road extending down into the Courthouse District. Courthouse District where we are right now is right here. If you're looking at Courthouse Road, here's Smith Station, and here's the entrance into Bloomsbury subdivision, which is of interest. The property that we're talking about is actually even further upstream here, further back into Bloomsbury. It's off the map.
So when we look at the boundaries of the public, of the primary settlement district, from a planning purpose, it would seem to be the most desirable for it to extend sort of equidistantly from the, you know, from some point where the highest density is, I guess somewhere around the Spotsylvania Town Center or perhaps down 95 further. And if you took that, it would seem to me that this area that hasn't been designated primary settlement, but which does include Bloomsbury, Westridge, Deer Run, et cetera, as well as this new parcel, that you're creating almost like an indentation in this round bubble that comes out, that you've got almost like an artificially selected area that isn't in the primary settlement area, and yet it has many characteristics of it. My point being that I believe that when we were looking at the 2013 boundary expansions, I automatically presumed that Bloomsbury and Westridge and that area was in the primary settlement district because it certainly bears the characteristics of a primary settlement district. But we're learning tonight that it's not, right?
That's correct. It is not currently in there.
So a, an area, whether it's a primary settlement district designation or not, it's, it's a developed like a primary settlement district.
Yeah, the difference being, as I had stated, and Brent had noted, the, the one development that did have public sewer, the Bloomsbury, for instance, if we take steps back, I'm going to just take step back to this slide, Bloomsbury, you can see the blue lines here, these are water lines, the purple are the sewer lines. Bloomsbury and Stewart's Crossing over here, they don't have the sewer lines, and that's really the big request here, is the sewer infrastructure. As I had noted earlier, regardless of whether this, this request was approved, this development can be served with, with public water, just the sewer system is the issue. And therein lies the issue that Brent had raised about developing it so far upstream and eventually having to build infrastructure to address that, as well as the precedent that's set by having project-specific pump homes.
May I ask a question? When we extended the expansion of the primary development area, utilities, did you have input on that with planning staff?
Yes, we did.
That utilities would be able to serve those areas?
That's correct. You have the Jackson Gateway area, which is the, you've got to think how it's a little bit bigger now. If you think about the Jackson Gate, we route one corridor. To sewer the route one corridor, we have a large sewer project underway. We acquire an easement right now for it, which basically puts a pump station, regional pump station, at the Poe and the Nye.
When you say regional, what are you including?
I mean, one big pump station.
Wow, okay, that's right, okay.
And we have a large, we built Massaponix Sewer Interceptor. We actually set a force main receiving sewer up. We've done a lot of, put a lot of money in the ground to take care of the whole area. We're essentially going to put a big pump station in front of the Nye Village area, you know, the rezoning you did at Luxstone.
Yes.
Down, down the Nye, at a point that you can also go back up to Poe and almost collect, collect all the sewer all the way up to Thornburg. And that gives us a collection of sewer up the whole Route 1 corridor between Thornburg and Massaponix High School. Now, by doing that, we're putting a regional pump station past 95 at the county line to catch everything up to Nye, everything up to Poe, eventually. This is 50 years out whenever. So what was asked of me was, what's a good place to expand past existing comp plan areas? So you had the, the development boundary up around the Massaponix, everything up here around Massaponix, everything developed from the city of Fertisburg out. Route 1 corridor kind of blends in. The Nye down to Route 1 corridor from Courthouse to Route 1 is right down this route here, which is the gravity sewer route. If you looked, the Nye goes downhill where I want to go, straight down to Route 1. And that's, that was a, a natural progression up. Does expand the area. And you get to pick where you want to grow, and utilities will say, here's an easy way to do it. An easy way to do it was just go up the hill, let the sewer flow downhill to us. So that was a natural progression up.
I was under the impression, but I wanted to make sure that utilities was included because I thought I remembered reading the report that you all had agreed to the expansion of the boundary that the board, that the commission voted on for the comprehensive plan.
Yes, but the planning department came to us with your request for areas we could expand. We looked at areas that are easily sewered.
Yes.
Easily water, we'll have water and sewer infrastructure at the least cost to everybody, the easy way to expand, and we select, we suggested these areas among some others that are easily expanded. Lick Run, for example, goes down to the Chansworth Retreat pump station that's in. It's all a regional pump station. Once you went over the ridge, we'd like to do it in drainage spaces. And here, we, the Nye is a logical extension up.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We've also looked at this project area from a strategic point of view, and one of the discussion items that has come up is the idea of a connector road between Gordon Road and Smith Station Road off the Spotsylvania Parkway. This conceptual road has been briefly discussed in conceptual format, not thoroughly studied, at the Transfer Vegetation Advisory Group, and recently on November 24th, the Board of Supervisors did direct staff to move forward with pursuing a comprehensive plan amendment to the thoroughfare plan that would require additional study, though, to figure out precisely where this is best located, where it's most cost-effective, and frankly, requiring a public hearing, this, this would likely go, need obviously community buy-in considering it's the scale of it. However, staff does not believe the potential location of a concept connector road without further study between Gordon and ultimately Smith Station, Spotsylvania Parkway, is justification to change the primary development boundary as well as a land use designation for an expansion of a sewer system. It's, it's linking, we don't see a linkage between a limited access roadway and additional housing developments that would not directly access this particular road. The project area warrants consideration as a location of a connector road that is conceptual at this time, but again, without additional information, we at this time do not want to, we've not tied this in with this comprehensive plan, and we're not considering it as a comprehensive plan amendment factor.
Is that the Old Outer Connector Road?
It is a piece of the Old Outer Connector Road, yes, that's correct.
That was not approved, am I correct?
It had been removed from some time, yes. So with that, we've kind of broke our findings down into two primary areas. The first request is the obvious expansion of the primary development boundary for expansion of sewer infrastructure. We found that the creation of a satellite primary development area would result, that would be physically disconnected from the existing development area and surrounded by land uses that are typically consistent with the rural residential land use as well as their underlying zoning, which is rural. There is a factor to consider regarding impacts of character on a more dense development on existing homes that were established with the comprehensive plan precedent and history that has historically supported rural residential and open space in these areas. So we are looking to minimize any impacts on existing homes and residents. The project-specific pump stations run contrary to utilities' efforts to set a precedent for additional standalone requests. Again, the threat of proliferation of similar requests about the boundary of the primary development area that the utilities department may eventually have to deal with. Sewer interceptor will ultimately be required in the future in order to extend up the Nye River drainage area from an existing Wishner Regional Pump Station to this project in order to be consistent with utilities' efforts. And the existing primary development boundary is not yet built out and was recently expanded by more than 3,000 acres. The primary development boundary expansion and complementary change from rural residential to low-density residential would support a substantive change to the surroundings of existing developments that had historically been established as rural, large lot preservation and protection and agriculture. As, in terms of our future land use findings, a land use change from rural residential to low-density residential is only appropriate if the primary development boundary is expanded to enable provision for public sewer. On balance, the project area is surrounded by rural residential land uses, consistent with rural residential land use designation, and proposed densities are supported by low-density land use designations and are not complementary to adjacent developments. The potential location of a conceptual connector road was found not to be justification to warrant change the primary development boundary in order to expand sewer infrastructure and amend the land use designation to support higher-density residential. And with that, with our analysis, staff recommends denial of this comprehensive plan amendment request. We would note that should the planning commission decide to move forward with an approval recommendation this evening, considering the utilities' input for a more regional focus, we would recommend that, that, that recommendation be forwarded with the approval recommendation to the board supervisors. Again, I would, I would note, as I had stated earlier, though, setting a precedent of a single project expanding to a much larger expansion of the primary development boundary is precedent-setting as well. And I'll take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
First one I have is, can the property be rezoned without the primary settlement boundary being, or rather, this comprehensive plan amendment being adopted?
Yes, it can.
Okay, that's what I thought. The second question is, if the applicant determined to develop by right, how many lots would they be by right allowed for this 186 acres?
The by right is 10 lots.
10 lots. Thank you.
And just stepping back when I said, yes, it can be rezoned, it wouldn't be rezoned to the, to the residential one, but it could be rezoned to a different zoning category of a lower density, yeah, served on with septic systems.
And that, and would that, what, how many lots would that be allowed then?
We had suggested as an alternative to consider the planned rural residential zoning district with a density of one unit per two acres, which would allow, that would come to 93 lots. But again, like we said, that would be on private septic.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Then I guess we should open the public hearing for the application of the comprehensive plan amendment. The, right, that's the next step, or do we hear from this applicant?
The applicant speaks now.
And, well, since these are both tied up, are we going to go through this twice?
Yes, there have to be two public hearings.
People don't have to speak at both of them, do they?
No, they can choose which one they would like to speak at.
All right, thank you. Very well, let's, let's hear from the applicant then.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Mike Jones. I live in the Cortland District, and I'm here on behalf of the Tri-Cord Companies. First, recognizing that we're going to follow this public hearing with the second public hearing on the rezoning, I'm going to hold the bulk of my comments for that rezoning so I'm not wasting anyone's time. But I would like to make a couple comments about the comprehensive plan amendment. First, to state that when we began this process, it was to rezone 124 lots using a small pump station. We were not anticipating at that time having to go through the comprehensive plan amendment. We were quite surprised recently to see it expanded to the level it has been. I've heard the justification tonight, but it I've heard the justification tonight, but it, it now looks like it encompasses 1,000 acres and is a fairly massive effort that would be something more regional in nature. That's not of our initiative. It's not what, all we needed was to get a small portion of property, according to staff, into the primary settlement area. The reason for that is we do want to employ a pump station. And the reason we want to employ a pump station is we were hoping to put smaller lots on the property. And the reason for that was to carve out a piece of land that would keep the option for a, a future road through the back part of that property. And so that's really what has driven this. And so I'd like you to consider that, as you consider that, this public hearing tonight. The balance of my comments relate more to the rezonings, so I'll save them for them. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much. We'll then proceed to the public hearing. As the public addresses the commission this evening, the, at the Diaz, please come forward, identify yourself, and give us your address. The little black box there on the front of it will have a green light. If you are representing a group, please identify that, and you will be granted five minutes to speak. The light will stay green until it's one minute remaining in your time, and then it will turn yellow. The yellow light comes on for a minute, and then after that, it'll be red, at which point we hope you will have concluded your remarks. Did we, I'm sure people signed up to address the public hearing.
Yes, sir. I have Erin Sherwood, followed by Catherine Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Erin Sherwood, and I live at 7109 Hillwood Court. I'm in the Livingston District, and I oppose the amendment to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is, and the amendment to it is the cornerstone of this whole project. And I would like to call your attention to it because it's based upon some misrepresentations and falsehoods. Section K of the amendment, the request for the amendment to the comprehensive plan speaks to the impact and the benefit that the amendment would bring. Now, Mr. Jones describes his lots as large, wide lots that are designed to be a subdivision of high-end homes. Ms. Pomato, could you put up the? Oh, sorry. You know what? I'm going to keep talking because I only have three minutes. But in any event, clearly, the, even the, the plat that, that you all reviewed earlier shows that these are not large, wide lots. And in fact, they could be a quarter acre with only 16 feet between the homes. These are not upper-level homes. Mr. Jones, based on his application, would lead us to believe that he's doing this for the economic benefit of Spotsylvania because these homes will attract executives of top-level companies. I don't believe that homes on a quarter-acre lot where you can pass the toilet, or the toilet paper to your neighbor through the window are going to attract this type of buyer. If Mr. Jones could prove that there was a true demand, then I would point him toward Fawn Lake, where there are currently 49 homes on the market. Or Bloomsbury, where there are eight. Saw Hill, where there are eight. Or Glen Haven, where there's a multitude of vacant lots available. A truer price point comparison would be akin to the homes in Lee's Park, where there are currently 15 homes for sale and which is commonly referred to as foreclosure gardens. In his application, Mr. Jones would have you to believe that of the almost 7,000 new housing units that have been approved of late, that were spoken of earlier, that none of those homes are like the ones that he is proposing. I've been to these hearings. I know what's going in at Alexander Station. I know that there are 1,200 homes that are exactly what he wants. I know that the legends of Chelmsfordville, 217 homes, exactly the nature that he's intending. Finally, Mr. Jones claims that the Spring Grove is in almost perfect conformity with the surrounding area in terms of lot size. Your own planning department has stated on the record that Spring Grove, the lots of Spring Grove, are two acres smaller than the ones in Bloomsbury. I don't call that almost-perfect conformity. The application for the amendment of the comp plan fails as it's not based on facts and does not meet the requirements set forth in the comprehensive plan itself.
Thank you.
It's the responsibility of the planning commission to make the determination that's consistent with the citizens of Spotsylvania County. Your citizens have spoken. We've submitted over 200 letters. We've given you over 300 signatures on a petition. This room full of white shirts are your citizens. We don't want Spring Grove.
Catherine Johnson, followed by Carlos Barrios.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Johnson. I've been a citizen in Spotsylvania for 21 years. And I have talking points that my husband and I went over last night. And I, you have them in front of you. And we would very much like to have written responses from you, if that's possible, in due time. But given the fact that these questions are not answered, I think that much of this needs to be tabled for the moment. I would like to read some of the questions because I think that the citizens sitting in this room need to know what some of the considerations are. One of the major points that needs to be recognized here is that the burden of proof rests with the county, not with the existing citizens, taxpayers, and the voters. We are already here in place. New residents, outside developers, especially low-income, should not carry more weight or influence than existing residents and taxpayers. We voted for you, and you work for us. Exactly what is the county's specific argument and case for going ahead with the rezoning expansion from a tax base, crime, school capacity, traffic, environmental, emergency response, and impact basis? Does one exist? If the answer is yes, we need to see it. We need to see it in writing. If the answer is no, why not? There's an incredible amount of focus on the sewer and on the water issues, and very little focus on the infrastructure, given the fact that VDOT has pulled back on their $77 million. But the infrastructure is crucial to what we're talking about here because we're talking about a one-lane, either-way, single road that winds around. And you are setting yourselves up for a development that is quarter-acre lots, one-way in, people trying to leave to go to work, backlogs trying to get out on Smith Station Road to turn right to get onto Courthouse Road to get out to I-95. And as it is, the backlog in the morning is ridiculous. And the backlog in the evening is ridiculous. So you try to embark upon something like this without having the infrastructure in place, working, is, is not good cohesive, careful planning. Additionally, there needs to be an adjustment to absorb the increased number of elementary, middle, high school students without negatively impacting the size, location, increased trailers, and the quality of education. We're talking about 186 homes. Approximately, perhaps, three kids is 550 students. You need to address the increase in crime that's going to come with the additional population. You will have students.
Thank you very much.
You will have, I have 25 seconds left. You will have students crossing through our development. And, and that's going to increase vandalism. There's going to be, we have trouble with drugs in this county. All of these things need to be taken into consideration. It's our understanding that a second egress point is required. If that's true current rezoning, under the current rezoning plan, if the, is there, I mean, once you get into that first plat, there is an automatic necessity for a second point of departure into Courthouse Road.
Thank you so much.
So if you could possibly, and I'm going to pass these out to the people here. They need to know what the questions are. They need to know what the answers are. And you have a duty to us. It says I have a minute and 13 minutes remaining. Is that correct?
No.
That's over. I apologize. I apologize. But, you know, I don't have, I do not have children in the school system any longer. But I have seen a change in this county. And if the desire is to bring higher-educated corporate professionals down here, we have to do something with Spotsylvania.
Yes, we got that point. Thank you.
Carlos Barrios, followed by Kim Southern.
Thank you. My name is Carlos Barrios. I live at 10314 Rolling Ridge Drive, and that's in the Ridgecrest Estates. We, my wife and I purchased a home there in Ridgecrest Estates 10 years ago. We are a small, small neighborhood of 16 homes. 16 homes with one road, one road that goes into a cul-de-sac. What they're proposing here is to put in a massive, massive subdivision that is accessed by this one simple road and behind our small neighborhood, which it is impossible to get a fire truck through if you have school buses coming in, cars parked on the road. It will be impossible to get through. Traffic will be a nightmare, not just for the residents there, but also for any professionals that need to come in, such as plumbers, you know, any kind of lawn work, et cetera, that kind of thing. What we're asking for is that this massive subdivision not go forth. This county has seen a lot of growth and a lot of expansion. There is no need for an additional subdivision to be put in here. I have moved down here from a very congested northern Virginia. And like I said, my wife and I purchased a home in this area because of the beautiful rural area, the wonderful wildlife that still exists there. And that all will be devastated and taken out if this is allowed to go through. Now, in wrapping up, I just want to reiterate that, again, this is not a small, little neighborhood that's going to be put in here. What we're talking about is 120 homes with at least two, if not three, vehicles at each house. Trying to get to and from work every single day on one road that has no sidewalks for children to be on to get on and off the bus. And again, one simple road that, that will have to support this massive traffic, which is absolutely impossible to fathom. It would be worse than the gridlock on 95. Thank you.
Kim Southern, followed by Carol Moretti.
Good evening. My name is Kim Southern. I live at 9701 Pamela Court in the Livingston District. I do live in Bloomsbury, where I want to make it clear that we have city water, but we have septic service. My husband and I moved down here from Fairfax approximately 10 years ago. I've been told that if I come up here and speak on a personal level, that y'all will just tune me out immediately. But I think that I speak for most of us here tonight when I say I am here for personal reasons. I'm here to try to protect my quality of life and the most expensive investment I've ever made in my life, which is my home. My husband and I moved down here, as I said, from Fairfax to escape the congestion, the overcrowding, the unintelligent overdevelopment that occurs up there. If we wanted to live on top of our neighbors on a small plot of land, we would have stayed in Fairfax. We came to Spotsylvania for the allure and the appeal of living in a semi-rural area. We had our real estate agents check the land adjacent to my property, and they assured us it was zoned rural residential. And if it was ever to be developed, it would be houses compatible with our own. Large homes on large lots. I don't want to look out my back door onto four houses 16 feet apart on .69 acres. Allure and appeal is something that I really think you need to keep in mind when you look at the comprehensive plan. People, as far as I know, most people that move to Spotsylvania County don't come down here for jobs. My husband commutes 60 miles to DC, works in the Navy Yard every day, both ways. And he said, when we moved down here, that it would be worth it to come down here to our beautiful home and our quality of life here in Spotsylvania. And that's the allure in Spotsylvania County. I think you really need to think about whether or not we're going to remain a bedroom community. Or, you know, I don't see a lot of industry coming here. I think, you know, what we're, what we're going to be, what we are, basically, and what we're going to stay is a bedroom community for the larger DC area. We had to move 60 miles away to have the quality of life that we want. Now that's being threatened by this ridiculous development that's unnecessary, unwanted, and unneeded in our county. And I'm going to sum up there, and thank you very much for listening to my personal take on the issue.
Carol Moretti, followed by Glenn Shelton.
Hello, my name is Carol Moretti, and I live at 6905 Bloomsbury Lane in the Livingston District, and I oppose the Spring Grove development. Historically, Spotsylvania County has conducted a survey for citizen satisfaction. It was conducted through UVA, and the focus was the quality of life of the citizens of Spotsylvania County. The last time the survey results were published was 2007. At that time, nine out of 10 citizens felt that traffic congestion was a major problem. The study also found that 80% of Spotsylvania's citizens felt that there was too much growth. That was eight years ago, and we are still saying the same thing, and yet we continue to be ignored. Please listen to your constituents. Please deny Tri-Cord's application. Thank you.
Glenn Shelton, followed by Richard Emery, I believe it is.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and your other good folks. I'm Glenn Shelton. I live at 10807 Cedar Post Lane in Hollybrook off of Smith Station. There's no need to me to stand up here and repeat all what the other good folks have said. It's all combined into one, that this development just does not fit in with the comprehensive plan. Listen to the county planners. We don't need another development with a pump station. We don't need a development that's going to pay for their own private sewer system. It, it does not work. You know, we need to stick with what we got. And the, um, Smith Station Road is, is a disaster now. We all know that. We haven't got the full impact of the VRE yet from them good folks running to Route 3. After the first of the year, that's going to add more cars to Smith Station. We got the county fire and rescue. I'm not a big fan when I see the trucks coming, but them guys got a job to do. Now, we just, we got to stick to the plan that you guys set forward and your, before you guys about the growth and the plan where it's at. Let's stick with the county comprehensive plan. Thank you, guys. Have a nice evening.
Richard Emery, followed by Trevor Schroetz.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Richard Emery. I've been a resident of 10306 Rolling Ridge Drive. I have my neighbors here. I think if you pass this, it's going to be a disaster, just as other members have said here tonight, my neighbors. I look outside. On the weekends, I see children riding their bicycles. We won't see that anymore. We'll see cars, and more cars. I live, happen to live on the corner of the cul-de-sac. And as they've said, that's a one-way street. There's going to be hundreds of cars. It's going to be a thoroughfare. So I ask that- So I ask that this bill be denied, and that we stay as we are. Thank you so much.
Trevor Schroetz, followed by Ted Rangel.
Good evening. My name is Trevor Schroetz. I live at 6832 Silverbrook Drive in the Ridgecrest subdivision. I've been a resident of the county since December of 2005. And 10 years ago, my wife, Michelle, and I sought out a peaceful, safe, and comfortable community where we could raise a family. And we successfully found that neighborhood in Ridgecrest Estates. Our neighborhood has 12 homes that stretch along Rolling Ridge Drive and four along Silverbrook Drive. The proposed Spring Grove development will have a single point of ingress and egress from primary roads. That road is Rolling Ridge Drive, which will connect Spring Grove—the community Spring Grove—to Smith Station Road. The value proposition of our neighborhood is that we live in an area where the roads immediately in front of our homes are unfettered by traffic, noise, and busyness. We enjoy wooded backyards and the space between our homes that provides the quality of life that we sought in our investments. It's the reason that my family and the other families in Ridgecrest Estates moved here. Safe place for our children to play, to ride their bikes, and to run with their friends. In fact, of the 16 homes in Ridgecrest Estates, half of the families there have children, and the majority of those children are under 12 years of age. There are no sidewalks in our neighborhood. The road has a primitive gravel shoulder, and the street is barely wide enough for two vehicles to pass safely. If the requested comprehensive plan change is made, this will pave the way for 124 homes to be constructed on the interior side of several adjacent neighborhoods with very similar characteristics to what I've described, effectively creating an island of clustered homes. Added construction traffic and residential traffic will not only spoil the value proposition that I've outlined, but it will also create an unsafe environment for our children to live and play in. As a tax-paying resident of Spotsylvania County for 10 years, I implore you to keep the comprehensive plan for the Spring Grove land intact and not to change—not to change —the plan which would pave the way for an untenable amount of homes to be built. Thank you.
Ted Rangel, followed by Jill Rangel.
Good evening. My name is Ted Rangel. My wife, Jill, and I moved here 10 years ago, and we're both retired military. So like many people, we researched the area, and we found this area to be exactly what my neighbors are describing. We enjoy seeing the wildlife in our backyard and everything. We live at 6835 Silverbrook Drive, which intersects Rolling Ridge—I'm sorry— so we're right on the corner there. This sub-development would impact us directly because that road is the only way in and out. We have three school-aged children, and the same thing. We like them being able to walk to their friend's house, get off the bus with no sidewalks, limited lighting. This all impacts us. We greatly oppose this. Thank you.
Jill Rangel, followed by Greg Luce. Greg Luce, followed by Steve Williams.
Thank you for having me. My name is Greg Lozey. I reside at 10419 Rolling Ridge Drive. I stand in opposition also to the Spring Grove project. Much has been said about Rolling Ridge Drive. I'm trying to think of something that you might already not know about it. Rolling Ridge Drive is actually not much of a street. It's a blacktop road. The road is 400 yards in length. It's not very, very long. The road is 22 feet in width. There are actually only 12 homes that have the address of Rolling Ridge, even though 16 homes liberally can be counted as among the homes that line that street. 15 school-aged children live in this small corridor. During nice weather, they can be found outside and on the street. There are no sidewalks for neighbors to visit each other. We actually go to the street, walk along the street to find each other and visit and have neighborhood activities. If Spring Grove is approved, 124 homes, times two cars per family—it's not hard to do the math. Another 250 cars are going to be added to that small stretch of road. That's the only matter of exit and entrance to the new proposal of Spring Grove and 124 homes. When I first received my letter from TRICORD last winter that new homes were going to be built at Spring Grove to the south, all the neighbors and I were notified that 89 would be the number of homes. Some of us, to include myself, dialed back in to members of TRICORD—I'm not sure who I chatted with—to register our objections based on the merits of the cases we saw them. In true form, the response that we got back from TRICORD at the first and only briefing that we heard from them was to increase their footprint by 40% to 124 homes, from 89 to 124. That was kind of the reception that we got. At the briefing that TRICORD provided last winter, we were told we'd be kept informed as to the progress made on the development of Spring Grove, that there would be additional briefings and meetings. We've heard nothing. This is the first time I've seen these people since last winter. So I solicit your support in denying the project called Spring Grove. Thank you for your attention.
Steve Williams, followed by Tim Sherwood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I live at 9410— my name is Steve Williams. I live at 9410 Everett Court, across the street from Bloomsbury. I rise to oppose the amendment of the comprehensive plan. Mr. Jones does what developers do. They see a square foot of land, and they try to figure out how to build on it. But what this needs to be done is to consider what the impact of making a change to the comprehensive plan for a specific standalone satellite area, whether you just do that area or you do the entire area proposed by Mr. Petrovich and his folks in utilities. If you do that, you may as well throw away the comprehensive plan that you currently have, because every developer will know that all they have to do is come in and ask for a change. And so I'm telling you what I believe is the worst outcome you could possibly achieve by approving this, and that is to open the floodgates to developers charging in with every vacant piece of land they can find and suggesting that this is just a small change in the comprehensive plan. I would also note that by way of summary is that I believe that the development being proposed is actually a safety hazard for everybody that's in that area. The children, the people who are walking their dogs, and the other traffic that is now—or will be—on those roads if this is approved. I believe that that is going to represent not only safety, but huge additional costs that has not even been talked about, because the focus has been on the sewers. So I ask you not to approve this comprehensive plan amendment, but to turn it down. The developer can build on that property. They can build 89 homes, I believe it was said, and I believe they can build it with water and septic systems, and that would be also a very potentially attractive community if it is on large enough lots with large enough homes for the type of client that the builder is—or developer is looking for. Thank you very much.
Tim Sherwood, followed by David Forster.
Mr. Chairman, committee members, my name is Tim Sherwood, and I live at 7109 Hillwood Court in the Bloomsbury subdivision Livingston District. I oppose the amendment to the comprehensive plan submitted by TRICORD. Thanks for allowing me to tell my family's story. I moved my family here eight years ago from Baltimore. I was a thoracic surgeon in the faculty at Johns Hopkins Hospital. They needed a thoracic surgeon down here. They recruited me here to Mary Washington Hospital. We came here after about a year of decision-making primarily because of Spotsylvania and the area that we could live in. We were looking for a rural area. I needed to be about 20 minutes from the hospital, and Spotsylvania and specifically Bloomsbury fit the bill. It's offered a rural environment and sanctuary for the stresses of daily life, exactly what we were looking for. That's why we came here. TRICORD's development plan will have four to five housing units buttoning right up to the back of my property. All of my neighbors that line this development, including the neighbors in Bloomsbury, the neighbors on Rolling Ridge, will also have the same. There will be no buffers in place to preserve the character of the area. There will be 124 housing units clustered together in the relatively small area. The consequences of this are obvious. It is also very obvious to me that this proposal benefits no one but TRICORD and its owners. The county administration made a commitment with the comprehensive plan to focus development in a specific area and preserve rural areas. You made that commitment two years ago. Clearly, the future development of Spotsylvania County was not intended to be fulfilled by inserting high-density housing developments in the middle of rural neighborhoods. Additionally, that housing is not at all comparable or compatible with the existing properties. Finally, Spotsylvania officials are not in a position to justify more housing without having the infrastructure to support even its existing population. When you make your decision, please think of the virtues of Spotsylvania County that brought the existing citizens here in the first place. If you want to attract and keep families looking for a place like what Bloomsbury provides, you need to preserve the areas in which they live. If this proposal and application is passed, it will be an indication to all that Spotsylvania County's administration has decided to disregard its mission and its responsibility to preserve citizens' quality of life and the sanctity of the property they have invested in and call home. This proposal makes absolutely no sense to any of the citizens of Spotsylvania County, any of them, not just us. In fact, this amendment is downright ridiculous and serves no one but TRICORD. At the end of the day, this boils down to credibility and integrity and doing what's right for the citizens of Spotsylvania. I'm not aware of any preconceived arrangements under which TRICORD acquired this property, but it's not the county administration's responsibility to pass this amendment and rezone this property in order to facilitate their financial gain. Please demonstrate to us that you represent the citizens of Spotsylvania. Thank you very much.
David Forster, followed by Lori Haynes.
Good evening. My name is Dave Forster. I live at 7101 Hillwood Court in Bloomsbury. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening with my fellow citizens. Sustained economic development, short and long vision in support of the county. These are your words in the vision statement in that hallway out there. I've yet to see in any artifact presented how this development supports that vision. It's unclear to me financially how this supports long-term economic growth. The proffer, if recovered or paid, is a one-time payment. It doesn't support the long-term bill incurred by the additional students in the schools, the additional EMTs, the additional fire stations that are necessary to support the citizens that would move in here. The comprehensive plan, which is the subject of discussion, was put in place by you to preserve that vision. And the discussion tonight is for you to walk away from it. My question is, is this the only place in Spotsylvania County that can be developed? I don't think so, because there's 5,000 housing units already been approved, yet no one's building. This isn't Hollywood. You don't build it, and they come. So there's no need. I don't see that. 10% of our budget today is spent on servicing debt. This is going to exasperate that problem. We will issue bonds in the future to pay for the debt that's incurred to this development. It is the responsibility of the commission to plan, and I am sure that the submission of TRICORD is in compliance with the county code. But the county code does not account for the financial impact that will be incurred with this. And so while we debate and we discuss and we think, we have to look at the broader picture of the impact of this proposal. There are other opportunities in the county for this, and there are other opportunities in the counties for other business to be brought here. I encourage us to think broader. Thank you very much.
Lori Haynes, followed by Greg Robinson.
Hi, I'm Lori Haynes, and I live at 7104 Pineberry Court in Bloomsbury subdivision. We moved to Bloomsbury 12 and 1/2 years ago because we loved the rural charm, the big oaks, the hardwoods, and the large lots. And when I received a letter from TRICORD saying that they wanted to rezone the property behind us, my heart sank. The quality of life is going to change drastically for my family. This is a very personal and emotional—we're going to look out our back door and see seven properties adjoining ours. We have 3 1/3 acres, and it breaks my heart to know that we're going to have neighbors all around us again. So I'm asking you to disapprove this rezoning. It doesn't go along with our comprehensive plan. We purchased our property with the—knowing that it was zoned rural. So, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Greg Robinson, followed by Barbara Robinson.
Hey, good evening. My name is Greg Robinson. I live in Bloomsbury subdivision. I'm going to hit some of the same points, basically dealing with quality of life, safety, and precedence. I bought in Spotsylvania, particularly Bloomsbury subdivision, for its rural residential zoning, currently one house for every two to three acres. Spring Grove proposal is one house for every .64 acres. Now, potentially, I have three lots adjoining my property, affecting the aesthetics, home value, and quality of life, not just for me, but for the numerous people in the communities bordering this development, particularly Ridgecrest, Deer Run, and Bloomsbury. Along with the current rural zoning comes the current rural roads. I recently drove the two-lane roads bordering the Spring Grove development and visualized the congestion and public hazard of hundreds of additional automobiles on these roads. The infrastructure doesn't match the footprint of this development, placing an additional burden on schools, traffic planning, police, fire, and rescue. I also have concerns regarding unresolved issues such as the pumping station and drain fields in the development and their impact on wetlands and taxpayer maintenance costs. As we just saw here, it looks like the solution to make this happen would be an R1 zoning is to just double, triple down on development. And utilities has to go through all these contortions to get the R1 zoning approved. Apparently, you can't build a septic tank on .64 acres. Where's the housing urgency to make this happen? Precedents: Until recently, it seems most growth occurred south of Smith Station Road in the proposed development zone. Now, the plan is to move the new territory west. TRICORD bought 186 acres in 2014 for $650,000. A year later, now their valuation on 45 acres, maybe a third of that, is $859,657. Recently-approved policy that I was reading by the board here recommends developers pay from $18,579 to $25,805 per detached home in rezoning proposals. And this proposal, TRICORD pays $10,556 per detached home, less than half of the recommended rate. So my question is, are we setting precedence for developers' gold rush on discounted rezoned properties where the taxpayers are ultimately picking up the majority of the tab for services and infrastructure? And of course, a dreaded question, are we spot rezoning? In conclusion, the size of the proposed development has already doubled since its initial proposal. Where is a sense of urgency to approve and rezone these developments in Spotsylvania? There is no housing shortage. Numerous units sit empty and on the market for— Numerous units sit empty and on the market for many months. I urge the board to please keep the zoning as currently planned, rural residential, and have housing and growth match infrastructure. Plan managed growth, and don't overbill in Spotsylvania. Thank you for your time.
Barbara Robinson, followed by Valerie Williams.
Hi, my name is Barbara Robinson. I live at 7103 Hillwood Court, Spotsylvania, Livingston District in Bloomsbury. I just kind of wrote my speech tonight because I wasn't planning on speaking, but I wanted to support my neighbors and friends who call Spotsylvania home. In my heart, I have two homes. One is Virginia Beach, where I grew up, and one is here in Spotsylvania, which is my home for the last 15-plus years. Because of my husband's job, we could have moved anywhere within a 60-70 mile radius of Washington DC. We chose Spotsylvania because we love, we fell in love with this area. My husband's parents built a home in 1989 in Bloomsbury, and we just thought this whole area was magical. We traveled all over the country because of my husband's naval career, and we often spoke about wouldn't we be lucky people if we could one day live in Spotsylvania. Never in a million years thought we would ever be fortunate enough to come here. We have four children. One was born here, the last one. They've all been brought up here, been very, very happy with the schools, happy with the area. But one of the things that really bothers me about the way the development is around here, it reminds me of where I grew up, and every time I go home, I'm saddened by the way Virginia Beach and the whole Tidewater area is. It has turned into an overcrowded, overpopulated area that is a far cry from the beautiful, peaceful area of my childhood with strawberry fields, magnolia trees, and an abundance of seafood. When I spoke with my 23-year-old son tonight, he said, "Mom, I hope they don't ruin the beautiful natural woods that my brothers and I were fortunate enough to grow up in." He said, "Our childhood was pure magic. Please be wise when you grow our beautiful Spotsylvania, our beautiful historic county. Remember the heroes of the past. Remember the people of the present and the children of the future." Thank you.
Hi, my name is Valerie Williams. I live at 9908 Woodburn Court, and I'm in the Battlefield District. I oppose the comprehensive plan amendment. I'm actually here to read a letter that a friend of mine wrote who could not be here today, but I do agree with her sentiments. Good evening. I am a resident of Fox Point and a teacher at Massaponix High School. I have two children who attend Spotsylvania County Public Schools. I am writing as a concerned citizen, parent, and teacher. As a citizen and resident, I have concerns with the congestion on Smith Station Road from the Fox Point subdivision to Courthouse Road. This particular section has become an absolute nightmare. At any given moment, the traffic can get backed up from Courthouse Road beyond Fox Point subdivision. This section of Smith Station Road needs to be a top priority before committing to any further building in this section of the county. Our roads cannot support the amount of traffic this type of growth is creating. As a teacher, I see the effect of this growth, this type of growth, is having on our schools. Our schools were not built or designed to accommodate the large number of students pouring into these buildings. Classrooms are at or above normal capacity, and this in turn can have a negative impact on student learning. Large classroom sizes also limits technology usage due to there not being enough to support the numbers of students in each class. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mr. Chairman, that's all that signed up.
Thank you. Did anyone else wish to address the commission related to the application? Please do come forward then, one at a time. Well, come on forward. There's no reason to not address the issue. Because we can go through this again during the... Oh, do you have a list? Well, you're still welcome to address the plan amendment. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Burton. I live at 6836 Silverbrook Drive in the Ridgecrest Estates area in Livingston District. When this first came out, I looked at my own survey of my own land, and the reason I can do that and it's so readily accessible is because a year ago this week, we closed on our house. And I know I'm not supposed to bring up anything personal, but I want you to understand that as a retired military guy and a guy not from here, my family's not from here, we chose our house with the conditions of staying in Virginia, not only Spotsylvania County. I want you to understand that when we chose our house, we had given parameters to our real estate agent that would make me stay, me and my family, stay in this area. We chose our house based on everything that all of my other citizens and residents have already spoke about. When I signed my lease a year ago, I never thought that 1,240 cars would be coming up and down my drive, because as you know, the ratio for houses and cars is 10 to 1. So I ask that you consider my children, my neighbors' children, and all that you do in your consideration, and I please, I vote that you please deny this project. Thank you for your time.
My name is Paul Metzger, and I live at 7103 Pineberry Court in the Bloomsbury subdivision in the Livingston District. I'm not going to take your time repeating all the excellent points that my neighbors have made. Let's look at it from a somewhat different point of view, perhaps. The comprehensive plan is designed to assure people that their expectations will be met when they purchase property. I've lived here for 30 years, and I've lived in Bloomsbury for the last nine. My expectations, and I'm sure the expectations of all my neighbors, are that the comprehensive plan would protect and ensure the property that they purchased would be the same, that it would not change dramatically, that it would not be endangered. I think that's one of the purposes of a comprehensive plan to begin with, to meet people's expectations and protect them. This particular comprehensive plan amendment does not do that. There seems to me to be no particular rationale for granting this amendment. It defeats the expectations of hundreds of citizens of Spotsylvania County, expectations that should be protected in law. So a legal change against the interest of all these people really is counted, from my point of view, to the purpose of having a comprehensive plan at all. And that really is the point I would like to make, that this sort of change needs to be done with extreme caution when it defeats people's expectations, and there has to be an overriding necessity for doing it. Some of the reasons for altering a comprehensive plan were discussed by the county's planning staff. Those are excellent reasons. None of those reasons support this particular comprehensive plan amendment, and so I ask you, please, not to pass it and to honor the expectations of all the citizens of Spotsylvania County. Thank you for your time.
My name is Jim Reed. I live in Bloomsbury. I've been doing some math. I think those are two-foot squares, maybe on a tile, and if I count correctly... ...between the homes that are about to potentially be laid in this new development. I think I'm looking at a bunch of scared people. And in a short definition, we are afraid of an ulcer about to be dropped in our community called whatever the division is called, and I sure hope our fears don't come true. Thank you.
I am also a resident of the Livingston District and live in Bloomsbury. I would like to say that I am not opposed to development. I think development is a good thing. I'm a real estate attorney here in town. I conduct residential real estate settlements all day long, and I have for 15 years. I make my life on properties being sold. I also make my life on being able to call Spotsylvania County home and on having the draw that our county has. We have such a breadth and historic wonderment in our county, and you have such an opportunity to make this a sought-after community to live in. The comprehensive plan that's set up, you set up to do that, and that gets reviewed every four or five years, and you make changes to it, which is how the system is supposed to work. By making changes unilaterally that benefit one developer, not only is there a precedent set, but of course, you open the door for others to come in, and you fail to meet your own internal policies that you've set. One of the other issues that concerns me greatly are the proffers and the reductions in the proffers that have been done over the last probably two or three years. I know that in October, the proffer policy was amended and it was reduced, and the reduction for a single-family home went down to about, from 32,000 to 26,000. This specific plan is dropping that down to $10,000. That includes a 45,000, 45,000 acre, 45,000 acre, excuse me, like-kind exchange back to the county. But the like-kind exchange property has to be of like-kind. As one other individual indicated, there was a $650,000 purchase of this property not a year ago, and they're valuing right now this 45-acre parcel at 850-some-odd thousand dollars with highly steep terrain, wetlands, floodplains, and utilities that go right through the middle of it. If we're going to accept these kinds of numbers, I would hope that they would be based in reality and not based upon wishes of developers. Reading the Freelance Star a couple of weeks ago, it is highly disappointing to read comments from some of the supervisors. One of the comments from the supervisor in regard to the old proffer was that it made it hard for anybody to make any money out of the deal. I did not realize that the supervisors were elected to make money for private companies. I thought supervisors were here to help grow our community and follow the wishes of your citizens and taxpayers, in addition to your own county commission that's asking you to deny this amendment. Thank you.
My name's Patrick Freemires, and I want to thank you all very much for letting us speak. I thank all my neighbors for showing up here and their overwhelming support for the, for not supporting, actually, this change to the comprehensive plan. I live at 6900 Nob Hill Court in the Livingston District in the Bloomsbury subdivision. We're talking about the comprehensive plan at this point, and I fully expect to continue on tonight as long as it takes and talk about rezoning. I do not support either of these two measures, so right now I'll focus on the comprehensive plan. It's here for a reason. We've heard many different reasons, and I will just be repeating everything that we've heard, but I just want you to understand that you are being asked to amend this plan not for the welfare of us, all these people in white shirts and multicolored shirts tonight, but for the welfare and profit of a development company. I ask you to deny this request to amend the comprehensive plan for several reasons. This will breach the rural crest. It will open the floodgates, as we heard earlier, for further breaches. This is not why my family and I bought this plant, this property. We didn't come down here to be in the center of or surrounded by high-density development. This is going to change our community forever, and we do not at all support this. Again, it doesn't benefit us, the people who elected you, the people who pay taxes here. This benefits one particular company and one particular company only. Plan is here for a reason, and we ask that you stick with your plan. Thank you.
Seeing no one else coming forward then, okay. I see somebody.
Guess I never could keep my mouth shut. My name is Nicholas Harding, and I live in the Bloomsbury Estates section, and I also oppose both of these amendments. I moved down here recruited by Mary Washington Hospital also as one of the professionals who live in these communities, and one of the reasons I moved to Spotsylvania and to these communities to bring my support services was because it's a place I wanted to raise my family. I can tell you, putting a high-density development behind us, you're going to stop the influence, the influx of highly successful professional people into these communities, and these are the people we want in our communities. We want the motivated, you know, successful, high-earning people to come in, and they, we love Bloomsbury, and this will destroy it. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Then we'll close the public hearing for the comprehensive plan amendment and allow the applicant to comment if he cared to in response to some of the comments that were presented this evening.
Mr. Chairman, recognizing that we have another public hearing to go and believing that many of these comments really applied to that rezoning, and there may be others, I think that I will address some of those in my comments at that presentation and then hold any rebuttal comments until the end of that second public hearing.
Very well. Then, as relates to the application, then it's now up to the commission to consider its recommendation to the board of supervisors related to this application. We've heard a good number of things this evening and certainly understand the concerns of the people in the neighborhood. I do want to clarify a few things that came up in the testimony that we heard this evening. One, it was commented that this was, this might be, and I guess this is more relevant to the next one, that this would be considered spot rezoning, and that's not the case, if I'm not mistaken. Correct, counsel? This is not a spot rezoning.
This isn't a rezoning.
No, but I mean, the later project is not a spot rezoning.
How do you define that?
It's defined legally.
No, not by law.
It's when it's initiated by the government, not by an applicant, is my understanding. That's the general difference. Because all rezonings only affect parcels that are put under by the applicant unless the county initiates it, in which case it could be considered spot rezoning, but this is not a spot rezoning. Second, we heard that the debt service to the county is, that the current debt service on the county budget is 10%. In fact, it's less than 2 1/2%, and county fiscal government is very well-run, and I wanted to clarify that lest the public think that that, just because they heard it on television, that it was true. We also heard this evening that it seems to be okay when a family has a lot adjoining, I guess, the applicant's property, and it's okay for their children to go play on property in the woods behind their homes when it doesn't belong to them, and if I'm not mistaken, that constitutes trespassing. So we don't want to encourage trespassing.
What are you watching for, yes?
I'm just pointing out the law.
You're not.
So, if we can't have order in the... So if we can't have order in the hearing room... So, thank you. Is there a motion related to the application? Could someone, I think we have, we're trying to conduct the business here.
Yeah, please refrain from comments. Please allow them to conduct the business. Obviously, you've already had your time to speak, and we understand you have reactions, but the Plan Commission does have to be allowed to conduct its business. So we appreciate that.
Thank you. My comments were merely relating the truth. I mean, everyone's entitled to their own opinion, and that's fine. But if you stand up and tell us that the debt service is four times what it really is, I mean, I think that goes to the credibility of the person who's making the comment. And again, when people come before us and they represent certain facts, I think it's only fair that people don't immediately take everything that they see on television or read about in the newspapers being true. The current debt service, including principal payments, is $11 million scheduled for this year, and that's out of a roughly $450 million budget. So it is, it's wrong, and I think we have an obligation to be truthful and accurate. So, that said, I entertain a motion related to the application.
Mr. Chairman, after reviewing this application and after hearing reviews from our utilities department and also listening to the citizens voice their concerns, I feel as though there are many concerns out there naturally and rightfully so. And also from the utilities department, I asked the question, if you remember, did the utilities department, were they in on the expansion of the primary development area? And I was told yes. This was not an area that was included and was not included at that time. And I believe the reason for that is because utilities also did not look favorable upon what they would have to do as far as pump stations. I understand the cost of pump stations. I still have questions on many other areas of the pump stations. But however, I have to remember, how costly would this be to the taxpayers of Spotsylvania County, who would bear this cost? And I need more information on what the cost would be. So therefore, I would like to make a motion to table until the next meeting, CPA 15003.
Ms. Carter, I just wanted to clarify, is it your desire to continue this, to be able to hear it the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just to be clear, the motion is to continue not to lay it on the table for an extended period.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other comments anyone cared to make or questions?
I have a question. We've got two different items here, right?
Correct.
If we were to deny this comprehensive plan amendment, we still get to hear the second presentation, correct?
We do.
And if I heard staff correctly, if we do turn down this comprehensive plan request, the applicant can still move forward with his request, and based on our decision of his second request here, it can go on to the supervisors. Let me ask you a question. If we turn down the comprehensive plan amendment, that just dies right here, right?
Both of the items will go on to the Board of Supervisors for public hearings, and they will make the final decisions on both the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning.
Thank you. I'm clear on it.
So the motion's been made and seconded to continue the meeting. Are this issue to the next meeting? Any other comments? Very well, and let's proceed to vote. It is unanimous, and it will be continued to the next meeting. Next public hearing is very similar, obviously. It's rezoning R15001.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few things before I get started. In your packet, I had explained that we were on a bit of a time deadline, given the code requirement for when this application was deemed complete and the board needing to take an action within that 12-month period. And at that time, the applicant had not consented to an extension. But they did hand me an extension this evening before the public hearing, so I just wanted to let you know we're not as much of a timing issue as it was. The applicant also did hand me some additional information. Staff hasn't had a chance to evaluate it, so my presentation is as of, you know, tonight at 7:00, when the public hearing started. Also, in front of you are copies of petitions, and it's a large stack. It's staff's understanding when these were submitted. Some of those were hard copy, signed petitions, and then some of them were an online petition. And it was explained to staff that if someone signed the online petition, they did not sign the hard copy, so there's not supposed to be duplicates in front of you. And then I also want to say is that I think that you're going to hear a lot of the same information repeated in my presentation, so I apologize for that. But I think just for clarity, if you'll bear with me, then we'll have a, hopefully, complete understanding of the proposal. The applicant is proposing to rezone 186 acres from rural to residential 1 cluster to allow for 124 single-family detached units, which is the maximum density allowed by the R1 code for this amount of acreage. The proposed density is one dwelling unit per 1.5 acres, which exceeds the density supported by the rural land use designation in the comprehensive plan. Additionally, the property lies outside the primary development boundary. The applicant has submitted the concurrent comp plan amendment, which was just presented, to expand the boundary and to include the subject property and to change the land use designation to low-density residential. Both amendments, as we said, are necessary to support the rezoning as proposed. As part of my analysis, I have, staff has analyzed this, assuming that those amendments are approved. Here's an aerial photo with the subject property outlined in red. The property lies adjacent to Ridge Crest, Deer Run, and Bloomsbury subdivisions, as well as a 312-acre undeveloped property to the south. These are larger lot subdivisions ranging in size, lot sizes from 1 to 10 acres. This is the zoning map, again, with the property outlined in red. The site is currently zoned rural, which would allow the property to develop by right into 10 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 3 acres. You can see that the adjacent developments are also zoned rural. This was before the 2002 update to the code. Those were by-right developments. Here's the generalized development plan provided by the applicant. The proposed development will have one point of access through the existing Ridge Crest subdivision via Rolling Ridge Drive, which connects to Smith Station. And here's Rolling Ridge Drive. It does currently terminate into a cul-de-sac. This portion is unimproved right-of-way, and that is how the development will be accessed. Ridge Crest has been noted as a 16-lot subdivision right off Smith Station Road and about 500 feet west of the Smith Station and Piedmont Drive signalized intersection. The majority of the proposed lots are a minimum of half-acre in size, with six lots approximately 1 acre in size. Public streets will be provided throughout the development, and these will be ditch-section streets. They will not be curb and gutter, and they will not have sidewalks. There's also a future interparcial connection to this undeveloped property here to the south that I've identified there with the blue arrow. The R1 Cluster District requires a total of 40% of the gross acreage be provided as an open space, which in this case would be 74.43 acres. Per the ordinance, no more than 50% of the required open space can contain wetlands, RPA, floodplains, or steep slopes. The applicant is providing a total of 91.46 acres. However, the applicant has not identified how much of that acreage is in those sensitive areas. Staff cannot confirm if the ordinance requirement has been met on that point. Also, a portion of that designated open space, 45 acres, which is outlined in yellow, is proposed to be conveyed to the county. While the code allows for the open space and common areas to be dedicated to the county, the underlying purpose of this land conveyance is to ultimately accommodate a conceptual interconnector road that is being contemplated by the county. I'll get into greater detail on the road later, but on that point, the project's open space, only 60% of the open space will actually be contained on the development for the community's use. And staff's concerned that the intent of the open space requirement is not being met on that point. Now, moving on to the potential interconnector road. The concept is that the road would go from Gordon Road to Spotsylvania Parkway, and a concept sketch that you saw in the previous presentation does show that the road could go through the subject property. The road is not currently included on the transportation, on the thoroughfare plan, but it has been considered by the county's Transportation Committee. And at the board's meeting on November 24th, they did authorize staff to pursue researching the property, or the road, and to initiate the VDOT 527 traffic impact.
I have a question. You say the road's going to connect with Gordon and 208. Where does it come out on 208?
It would cross over 208, and it would connect to Spotsylvania Parkway. I'm sorry if I misspoke. Spotsylvania Parkway.
That's Smith Station Road right now, right? Extended, goes down by the high school.
It would go down and connect past where the quarry is and connect to the parkway. Yes. It'll kind of run around, parallel to Smith Station, and then go back up and dump onto the parkway.
So it doesn't go, it doesn't connect to the highway that goes by the school?
Smith Station Road. It would essentially run parallel to it.
Eventually, it runs the other way, so it doesn't come out the corner where the Twin Bow store is.
No, sir.
Thank you.
To date, no studies or alignments have been completed, so at this time, there's nothing to say for certain that should the interconnector road come to fruition, that it would be in this location. I'll also point out that the 45 acres the applicant is offering to the county has a significant amount of steep slopes, wetlands, and RPA, and has the transmission lines going through the middle of it. As Ms. Carter said earlier, this concept of this road isn't something new. It was part of the outer connector that was shown on the thoroughfare plan in 2002, but it was removed. The purpose of such a connection is not meant to facilitate development, but to move more traffic with limited access. So I just wanted to point that out. The proposed development will be served by public water, as there is a connection available at the end of Rolling Ridge Drive serving Ridge Crest. Providing sewer to the property, as we all know, is problematic. Again, I'm going to apologize for repeating any information, but I think for clarity, it's important to state these facts again. All developments in the primary development boundary should be sewered by a gravity line that flows to a regional pump station. This is consistent with the policies and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The adjacent subdivision Ridge Crest is outside of the primary development boundary, and it's served by public sewer. Why this works for Ridge Crest is that there is a gravity line that runs under Smith Station Road to the Masponix Regional Pump Station. The subject property cannot connect to Ridge Crest Sewer with a gravity line due to the topo issues, so to make the connection, the development needs the pump station on their property. For the subject property to be served with a gravity sewer, it would require the developer to construct a new line from the property to Wishner Station, which is about a mile and a half south at Courthouse Road, which would cost an estimated $2 million. The applicant's proposal is to install the pump station on the property, which will only serve the proposed 124 lots. While there's nothing in the county code to prohibit that pump station within the primary development boundary, the county's utilities department strongly opposes these individual stations for the individual developments. There's first, the short-term concern. Pump stations require regular maintenance, which is performed by the county and at the sole cost of county ratepayers. The pump station will not be constructed to serve a greater area, just the 124 lots. There's the long-term concern. On average, pump stations must be replaced every 20 years. The county has worked for the past 18 years to take individual pump stations offline and replace them with these regional facilities to serve a greater area. No individual pump stations have been constructed in the last 18 years. Replacement costs range from $200,000 to $300,000. Again, this cost burden, when this pump station fails, will fall solely on county ratepayers. Due to the constant maintenance issues that surround pump stations, the county at that time, if this was to be approved and that pump station fails, the county at that time would most likely opt to construct that sewer line from Wishner to the property, to Spring Grove. This would be the $2 million at the cost of county ratepayers. And lastly, from the utilities' perspective, this sets the precedent. The county has worked for the past 18 years to take these individual stations offline. Regional pump stations are more efficient from an overall maintenance and cost perspective. An individual pump station has not been constructed in the county for 18 years, and allowing a pump station for this development will open the door for others to follow. The question, and I'll kind of answer, maybe preempt a question, is you saw this in a rezoning that we had before you recently with Hill Farm, and Hill Farm was going to construct a pump station on their property. The difference with that is, is they were replacing the regional facility. So that was allowed in that situation because the regional facility was going to be relocated on their site.
Kim, what happens if the pump station breaks down? Does the county require the owner of that pump station to have a backup system, temporary power, a secondary pump? Any requirements like that that the county has or utilities?
I'd probably defer that to utilities, but it's the county's maintenance.
Typically, a pump station is a duplex system, a set of two pumps. One pump fails, the other one takes over. We have a skater or supervisor control that alerts the personnel on the call that's a problem and goes out and fixes the first motor that failed. If there is a power shortage, we have a backup generator that comes on and runs the station. And we have a pump-around connection, so if the pump completely fails, we can bring a portable pump in and pump until we get it fixed.
Is that the same requirement for a private pump station such as this, or is this just a...
This is a public pump station. If you're going to subdivide a piece of property, create a public utility, public lot, it becomes a part of the county utility system. So this is a public pump station.
Would this pump station be then public as well or private?
It would be public.
It would be public.
We subdivide a piece of property and create public utilities. We have the developer build the infrastructure, the water line, the sewer lines, and any pump station or such conveyed over to the county for operations before we start selling lots.
Got it, and thank you.
The applicant hosted a community meeting back in February of 2015. Several of the Ridge Crest residents expressed concerns over the increased traffic on Rolling Ridge Drive and that the only point of access was through their community, and then, of course, the pedestrian safety concerns that go along with that. In response, the applicant has proffered a pedestrian trail. I'll go into more detail on the proffer language later, but the idea is the applicant would construct a pedestrian trail along the lots in Ridge Crests, and I've highlighted that in red here. Other concerns raised at the community meeting were related to the number of lots.
Hey, Kim.
Yes, sir.
Does that require the taking of any property?
Well, I'll go ahead and get into the details now. No, that's okay. This proffer's extremely problematic. The way the proffer reads right now is that they'll construct a five-foot pedestrian trail along those lots if they can acquire the appropriate easements at no cost to the If they cannot acquire the easements, they will only provide the trail on the properties that they can acquire the easement. And so staff has raised that concern that this can result in a half-hazard stop-start trail. The proffer also says that the county will maintain the trail. That's not acceptable, so maintenance of the trail is a question. Moving on, other concerns were the number of lots and the size of the lots. Moving on, um, other concerns were the number of lots and the size of the lots not being consistent. Both Ridgecrest and Bloomsbury residents expressed concerns with clearcutting of the existing trees adjacent to their developments, and requested a buffer. In response, the applicant has proffered a 100-foot tree preservation buffer on some of the proposed lots that I've shaded in green there. I'll go into detail now. Again, this one's a bit problematic as well. You'll see that they're not buffering all of the lots, and also, the proffer doesn't include any such commitment, such as a deed restriction, that would prevent any clearing later on. It would really only ensure preservation of those trees during the development of the property, but an individual owner of a lot would most likely not be researching for proffers and could unknowingly remove those trees. So that would, that's been a concern with that proffer. Traffic. The applicant did prepare a traffic impact analysis, which was reviewed by the county's traffic engineer. The development will generate 1,171 vehicle trips during an average weekday. Even with the increase in traffic on this situation, there's no expected degradation to the subdivision streets or Smith Station Road. Also, this signalized intersection there at Piedmont and, um, Smith Station will allow sufficient gaps in traffic to allow for safe left-turn movements. So there were no, um, concerns from the, uh, that were raised, or improvements that were warranted based on that traffic study. I'll start the proffer discussion, the, um, when your packets were sent out, the, we did not have comments from the county attorney yet, the review was underway. We do have comments now, and the document cannot be approved as to form, so that is something to consider, but I'm gonna go through the comments that staff had as well. Firstly, the applicant has proffered to develop the property in conformance with the generalized development plan. They have proffered to limit the number of units to 124. Staff has communicated that 124 is the maximum number of lots for this proposed, with this amount of acreage, so this really isn't a proffer, and should probably be deleted. The applicant has proffered that the lot width for all lots will be in a minimum of 92 feet. This is an effort on their part to have similar lot widths with the Ridgecrest lots, and they are. The Ridgeclaw, Ridgecrest lots are still larger because they're deeper.
What's the setback requirement in this zoning, if this were rezoned?
The front yard setback?
No, the setback between side by side.
The side yard.
Side yard.
Eight feet. Side yard setbacks eight feet.
Excuse me, you said the setback from the side yard is eight feet?
Yes, sir.
So this gentleman's fear could actual, actually take place with sixteen feet between two houses? And possibly on it, and fifty feet between this one and the next one down there? That's all possible, right?
That's what, uh, the ordinance allows with the cluster subdivision.
Okay, it would help me a little bit if I already knew, 'cause we gotta wait, listen to the applicant, as with size homes and stuff we're talking about. Thank you.
The applicant has proffered that all lots will be a minimum of half-acre in size. The applicant has proffered to convey to the county 45 acres, which has been identified as parcel G on the generalized development plan, prior to or subsequently with the recordation of the first residential lot. I will point out that this proffer's not consistent with the proffer policy guidelines for land dedications. There are several points of information, including usable acreage, exclusive critical resource areas, and other studies such as an environmental Phase One, preliminary geotechnical information, a Phase One archaeological survey. All of those are in the proffer guidelines, and, and that information has not been submitted to date.
That's, that was my next question. You don't have it in information. I want to know how much of this land is usable land?
No, so that information?
The county could end up with forty-five acres of trash, that nobody's paying taxes on, right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's, uh, staff's concerns with the limited information provided. It doesn't allow the board to make an informed decision. The applicant has proffered the 100-foot tree preservation buffer, and as I noted, that was problematic, 'cause there really wasn't that commitment to ensure that those trees are preserved in perpetuity, unless there was some sort of deed restriction where an individual lot owner's gonna have that on his plat and be aware of that.
Does the, does the proffer go with the lot, though?
Just with the deed restrictions.
It would have to be in a, how, how does that work?
The proff, the proffers are recorded, but whether or not, uh, an individual homeowner will, will recognize those, or have that as part of, um, its title, i- it's not certain. But the, the proffers are recorded.
And therefore go with the, with the lot?
Yes, and it, the proffers are still, um, have the effect of a zoning ordinance, so if there's a required 100-foot buffer, it still is required, um, and, you know, if there was, um, some action to, to remove some of that, 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 that would be a violation. Um, I think what Kim is saying is that, you know, with regard to whether or not a property owner will or will not really know that, you know, just based on the recorded proffers, I think that's the concern, whereas, um, a, a restriction more on the, you know, specific lot may give them more notice, and, Kim, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong.
That was my point. Staff did recommend to the applicant to potentially consider a proffer that would provide a greater transition between the adjacent larger lots, which are designated rule, and the proposed lots. A few alternatives that they could consider would be relocating, or even eliminating some lots, creating a larger open space in between those areas, um, or creating lots that are simply more consistent with those adjacent lots, one acre or, or larger. The applicant has proffered that the parcels identified on the GDP is A through F will be conveyed to the homeowners association. Those are the open space pieces that I said are on the commu, the developments portion of the property. The applicant has proffered to construct the five-foot pedestrian trail to be made of concrete, or asphalt, or other similar material along the Ridgecrest lots, and, again, I won't repeat myself, but there were some prob, that seemed to be problematic language. The applicant has proffered to contribute $17,834 per unit above and beyond the buyright potential for this development, which is 114 units. This contribution consists of both cash, cash and the in-kind 45-acre land dedication. The land dedication value is $829,657, and where that came from is from the current proffer policy. It was $18,409 per acre for 20-acre tracts and higher, so that is, that, that number is consistent with the proffer policy. However, the proffer as written is not consistent with the proffer policy guidelines. The, the language as it is right now is quite confusing and difficult to enforce, and staff has recommended that they utilize the charts that are within the guideline, proffer policy, guidelines that lay out the total amount per unit, whether it's cash, whether it's an in-kind, um, uh, contribution, and then the timing of those. And lastly, the applicant has proffered to create a looped water line with Bloomsbury by providing a water line and easement to connect to the easternmost property line of the property. I know that the, this language is a little vague, and I know the county attorney has expressed some concerns just with the vagueness of the language, but the purpose of it is to an attempt, a comment that was provided by the utilities department. These looped water lines provide a better flow, and that would actually help Bloomsbury's water line, and it reduces the water line size for Spring Grove, so this was in response to a comment from utilities. Here we are to the capital facilities impact. This first table shows the estimated population and student generation for the new development, the existing conditions, and the impact on public facilities. The estimated number of calls for fire and rescue is calculated on a per capita basis using the fiscal year 2014 call volumes, and the school projections are based on the enrollment figures as of September 30th and this proposed development. Um, you'll see the population expected is 377. Right now, um, this development by itself, there's no capacity issues with fire and rescue, or the schools. We always refer you in your staff report to that appendix that shows all the approved development. If everything came online at once, um, and if everyone, everything came online at once, Cortland High School is the only, um, one of the schools that would be over capacity. Second table shows the applicant's proposed capital facility impact mitigation compared to the county estimated impact. These calculations are based on the current proffer policy, and are based on the number of units above and beyond the buyright development, which in this case, I stated is 114 units. The total projected impact is $2,941,770, and the applicant is proffering a total of This total does include the in-kind land dedication. The applicant's proffer amount, as I stated, would break down to $17,834 per unit total, and it would be $10,556 cash per unit. Staff completed a fiscal impact analysis based on the county's model, using the average assessed value of comparable developments. Those included Breckenridge, the estates at Lee's Park, and Ridgecrest, the subdivision that, that they would enter through. The average value of those three comparables came to $399,728. With the value noted, the proposed development shows an annual fiscal benefit of $102,085. The board's 30-year policy allows fiscal revenues to offset expected impacts. In this case, the benefits, um, would offset those impacts within nine years. If you removed the land dedication credit, it would still offset the impact, and that would be done within 18 years. The second table is the economic impact analysis, which projects the impact the development will have on the local economy. You can see 149 construction jobs would be generated with over $41 million in economic Go over the key findings that ultimately led to staff's recommendation. The proposal for 124 half-acre lots is not consistent with the existing adjacent development, which consists of larger lot subdivisions ranging in size from 1 to 10 acres. The applicant is providing a total of 91.46 acres in open space. However, they've not identified the amount of area contained in wetlands, RPA, and steep slope, so we can't confirm the ordinance requirement has been met. Further, a portion of that open space, 45 acres, is proposed to be conveyed to the county for a conceptual interconnector road. Only sixty percent of the open space will be on the development for the community's use. The applicant proposes to convey property to the county, including a credit against the development's impact on capital facilities, but has failed to follow the proffer policy guidelines in providing the information I noted above, particularly the usable acreage and the various Phase One studies. It would be important in making an informed decision on the conveyance. The conceptual interconnector road from Gordon Road to Spotsylvania Parkway is currently not included on the county's thoroughfare plan. No studies or alignments have been completed, so at this ti, at this time, there's nothing to say for certain that should the interconnector road come forth, that it would be in the location of this subject property. The applicant is proposing a pump station to connect to public sewer. Pump stations on individual developments are a maintenance and fiscal burden to the county and county ratepayers with both short and long-term concerns. Consistent with the comp plan, the county's worked for the past eighteen years to take these individual pump stations offline and replace with regional pump stations. As, as I've said, those regional facilities are more efficient from an overall maintenance and cost perspective. An individual pump station has not been constructed in the county in 18 years. The proposed pump station only benefits the Spring Grove development to support the maximum number of lots on the property. County ratepayers will solely bear the cost of maintenance of the pump station. While the applicant's proposal, um, on capital facilities impact mitigation falls short of the county's adopted policy amount, the projected fiscal revenues are expected to cover impacts within nine years, and even without the land conveyance within 18 years. In response to adjacent property owners, the applicant has provided 100-foot tree preservation buffer. Staff has concerns about that buffer being maintained in the future with individual lot owners. The proffered pedestrian trail is proposed, could potentially result in an awkward stop-start along Rolling Ridge Drive. Once the trail is constructed, the applicant commits the county as responsible for maintenance, and that's not acceptable. The proposal is not consistent with the existing development based on the proposed densities and, density and lot sizes. The applicant has not complied with the proffer policy, particularly with respect to the land dedication. The development proposes to provide sewer service via pump station, which is not consistent with the comp plan, nor supported by the county's utilities department. The applicant's proposal ultimately subjects the county and the county's citizens with a maintenance and fiscal burden to enable the maximum development of their property. With that, staff recommends denial of the request. I'll just reiterate, the county attorney's office completed their review, and at this time cannot approve the proffer document as to form. And that concludes my, um, presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Yeah, if, if I may, I have one more question. Did I understand you to say that this development would be connected to an adjoining development?
They show a future parcel, uh, interparcel connection to the, um, south. That's 312 acres of undeveloped property currently.
Okay, so it won't join any of these other folks' developments?
No, sir, just, well, the access, the, the primary access to the development goes through the Ridgecrest subdivision.
Really?
Yes, let me?
So it makes it an interparcel connected? Is that right?
Uh, here's Smith Station Road, Rolling Ridge Drive, which serves the 16 lots in the Ridgecrest subdivision. This is where the improved road ends in a cul-de-sac. This is unimproved right-of-way to the subject property, and that, that would be how they would access the property, is through rolling, or through Ridgecrest.
They're not, they're not able to connect to the highway themselves?
They don't have any, they don't have any public road frontage, other than this unimproved right-of-way here.
You just created one great big subdivision. And you know how I feel about interparcel connectors. Thank you.
Other questions? Very well, did we, did the applicant wish to comment at this time, or wait until the conclusion?
Chairman, first, let me say thank you to staff for the hard work that goes into the presentation tonight, for everybody for staying late. I want to begin by addressing a concern that I've heard a number of times from neighboring residents, that our lots are gonna be smaller than the lots in Bloomsbury and Ridgecrest. The average lot size in Bloomsbury is just under two acres, according to county tax records. As a matter of fact, Freelance Star printed an article that was incorrect, they've retracted and said they've made a mistake, so that information's not accurate. Ridgecrest's average lot size is 1.13 acres. Spring Grove, we're proposing 124 lots on 186 acres, which averages one home for every acre and a half. The difference is, we put half of our land in open space, and while people may not own it, it's still a part of their backyard. So in reality, the lots in Spring Grove, which average about three-quarters of an acre, are, may not be as big as the lots in Bloomsbury or Ridgecrest, but overall, impact and density is comparable to those communities. Not only that, as you've heard, we've made our lots intentionally a lot wider to accommodate larger homes, similar to what you find in, um, the Ridgecrest subdivision. larger homes, similar to what you find in the Ridgecrest subdivision. The typical subdivision these days, lots range from 40 to 60 feet. And so we have proffered a minimum lot width of 92 feet, which is what it takes to build the larger homes. I think it's important to note that this property sits on the edge of the growth area here in Spotsylvania County. There are already housing developments on three sides. As the economy approves and as more people move into this area, it really is a logical area for growth to occur. The real question is when and how this property is going to be developed, not if it's going to be developed someday. Our proposal will ensure that this property is developed with larger homes that are consistent with the neighboring, or adjoining neighborhoods. If it's not developed now, this area will eventually be taken into the primary development area, and when it is, you will see a much higher development or density than what we're I'd also like to point out that the access to Spring Grove is off of Smith Station Road, whereas the access to Bloomsbury is off of Route 208. The two subdivisions don't actually connect by road anywhere, and their entrances are 2 and 1/4 miles apart. To travel from the back of our property, where they have seven lots that touch above our property, around to those seven lots is about four miles. When you drive between the two subdivisions, you have to pass by Hollybrook, Westfield, Woodfield, and a number of older, smaller homes. And if the property values in Bloomsbury were going to be impacted by our development, I would suggest that they would have already been impacted by these other existing older developments that are already there. In regards to the 16 homes in Ridgecrest, the fact that there would eventually be more homes built behind them should not come as a surprise to anyone. When we first developed Ridgecrest over a decade ago, VDOT required that we extended, extend Rolling Ridge Drive all the way to the back of the property so that it could serve the rest of the property that we're now wanting to develop. The county required that we install a sign there on the road, letting everybody know that this road would eventually be extended. And unfortunately, because of the recession, that extension has been a long time coming. And so the folks that live on Rolling Ridge Drive have understandably, understandably become accustomed to living on what now feels very much like a private road, but everybody balked there, knowing that the road would eventually serve the property in the back. One last thing I'd like to say to clear up some misinformation that is being spread around. This petition, that's been circulating online, which I've seen, and you probably have too, asking people to sign their names in an effort to show broad support to defeat this rezoning. And while I respect people's right to free speech, I do have two concerns about this campaign. One is the false information that is being used to stir people up. The petition states that Tricorder intends to develop additional land adjoining Bloomsbury, and it shows a map of a whole lot of land that we don't own. And I'm not sure where the lie started and why somebody feels they can represent our intentions, but I want to clearly state that we have no plans or intentions along, consistent with what they're representing. The other concern I have is that we not allow anti-growth people living in faraway places that have access to internet and strong opinions to voice, have a voice in our community. One last comment. The fiscal analysis shows that Spring Grove will generate $102,000 annually, which, as you've heard, means the fiscal benefits will cover the expected impacts within nine years. That's significantly less than the 30 years called for by the board policy. Also, this amount will more than offset the costs associated with the small pump station that we would like to build. Now, we have submitted additional information, and we have, understand that there are now comments available from the county attorney's office, and we've heard a number of things tonight that we think need to be addressed and talked about, and we're willing to talk about a number of these things. And so we look forward to some more communication, some more opportunity to work with staff and you all to see how we might improve this, to address some of the things that we've heard so far tonight. And with that, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
There don't appear to be any, so thank you. Let's now proceed with opening of the public hearing. The rules related to the timing are the same as they were in the earlier public hearing. Three minutes, one minute yellow light, and so we can proceed. I believe a number of people did already sign up to address the issue. I think that the person would need to restate that that would be their intention.
Yeah, as a matter of procedure, that's not something that we, the county can do, is just adopt those comments over. You are all more than welcome to speak on this matter. You can even reiterate those. You can even stand up and say, you know, you may remember my comments previously. I would like to reiterate those. Anything you would like to say. But as far as summarily adopting public comments made on another matter and just moving them over, it is not procedurally allowed. But please feel free to get up and exercise your rights.
Is that something, Paulette, that you can do?
Yeah.
Yeah, if Paulette's comfortable with doing that, please do be sure to identify yourself so Paulette can identify the comments made in the earlier hearing. Obviously, you know, you want to be sure that those comments, you know, can be applied. Obviously, that was a separate issue, but again, that's all up to you all.
First signed up, I have Ted Rangel, followed by Greg Loos. I think he pronounced that differently when he stood up, but I don't recall.
Good evening. My name is Ted Rangel. My wife, Jill, and I live at 6835 Silverbrook Drive, which is part of Ridgecrest. First of all, I would like my previous comments to be recorded on this also. Where we live in Silverbrook and Rolling Ridge, I'd like to have you consider a safety concern. Having so many homes in the back there with this one access point. Back in 2010, when we had Snowmageddon, there was an emergency down the road from us, and the ambulance couldn't get there. So a fire truck had to come and try to plow through first. The fire truck got stuck, and it was there for a day and a half. Imagine if that happened on Ridgecrest. It would literally block all those homes. So, thank you.
Greg Loos, followed by Steve Williams.
Thank you. Greg Loos, 10419 Rolling Ridge Drive. Just a point of clarification. I want to make sure that it's understood that there was a sign posted at the end of the cul-de-sac at Rolling Ridge Drive, House Ever. In no way did it imply that there was going to be a development with a scope of 100-plus homes built to the south of us, in terms of that kind of order of magnitude that would have the impact of Spring Grove. So in terms of, are we being surprised by developments thus far? There was, there's no notice or no forewarning of that in terms of home buyers in the Rolling Ridge Drive area. I just wanted to make that clear because it was implied that somehow buyers in that area were put on notice by some sign or some signage, and that's not the case. I want to make that clear.
Steve, Steve Williams, followed by Tim Sherwood.
Steve Williams, 9410 Everett Court. My comments are specifically about the zoning. I believe that putting .68-acre lots jammed together as they are, placed as they are against the backs of other property owners, is not a suitable solution to developing this area. I believe that it doesn't even warrant being developed, but if it were, that is not the suitable size for that particular area. Second point, this is a safety problem. This is a disaster waiting to happen. If you put more, if every home in that development has two cars, I will guarantee you, you will have more than two trips a day out of that area by each home. So you're going to get well over 1,100 trips. That means you've got 1,100 cars, 1,200 cars, 1,500 cars going up and down that road, single road, single way in, single way out. There are children, there are people walking their dogs, there are people out running, there are people out walking and biking. They don't need that extra traffic. And finally, I would say that the idea that they have no intention of building beyond that point on those 312 acres is disproved by the fact that there is a connector road being made available at the south end of the property. Thank you.
Tim Sherwood, followed by Dave Forrester.
Hello, I'm Dr. Tim Sherwood, 7109 Hillwood Court, Livingston District. I oppose this rezoning. I would like my previous comments to be reflected on the record of this discussion. I want to repeat the facts that were relayed by the experts here, the people that we pay as taxpayers to vet this whole process. They're the experts. They know what they're doing. We believe them. I think you should too. This is not consistent with the existing homes in the surrounding area. This is a plot, an island of high-density homes surrounded by rural properties. Not consistent at all with the rural type of neighborhoods that we all moved here to be in. Again, we moved here to be in a rural environment, not to look out our back windows and see four houses, five houses, six houses, seven houses in some situations, and all the congestion that accompanies it, and all the traffic, the foot traffic back and through our properties everywhere, every subdivision. It's going to happen. Secondly, the proffered land is a joke. Let's all admit that. $850,000 for 45 acres of land that, if you walk out there, there are power lines going over the top of it, there are steep slopes, and there are wetlands. They can't use it anyway. Why would they want to keep it? Doesn't make any sense, and that's a bad deal for all the taxpayers of Spotsylvania. The pump stations, we just heard an expert, who I'm very impressed with, tell us that this is a bad idea. This is expensive. The past 18 years, we've been working to get rid of these things, and now we're going to build one because they want it? I don't think the taxpayers are going to agree with that, after they're paying for it with increased taxes, when your motto, and the administration's motto has been, we're going to decrease taxes. You're going to go up. They're going to go up. I'm not buying it. I'm not paying for the maintenance for this. 100-foot tree preservation area, that's our, that's our buffer? Really? Have you ever looked through 100 feet of trees when all the leaves fall off? It's like you're looking at your next-door neighbor when you live in a rural area, not like the place that I moved to, not the place that I want to be in. And then that pedestrian trail, let's all admit that that is a joke. It's a joke. Please. So I'm asking you to listen to your constituents and have some real honesty with yourselves about this. This does not make any sense to anybody but Tricorder. And if this does pass, I can guarantee you that the citizens of Spotsylvania are going to be extremely upset. This is going to grow. This resentment's going to grow. You've got to stop. You've got to limit this development. Thank you very much.
Dave Forrester, followed by Glenn Burton.
Dave Forrester, I live at 7101 Hillwood Court, Spotsylvania, in Bloomsbury. And I would like my comments to be recorded on the record with respect to this testimony as well. And my comments will be brief. But it is from a financial investment to a return question that brings me pause. To look at a nine-year horizon, an 18-year horizon, to get a return on an investment, a long position to take. And while we're waiting for that realization to happen, somebody's got to pay for the bill as it comes due every month. So that bill gets put upon someone, and that's all of us. Now, the only way you make good on that horizon, that nine-year, 18-year horizon, is if somebody actually buys the homes and somebody moves into them. And we've stated before in the previous testimony that there's a glut of housing on the market, glut of housing permits that could be issued. So it draws into question the ability to actually realize that return. Physical reality there. My last comment is a little bit of a personal one. Sir, I served in the Navy for 24 years and retired. The 10% debt servicing, that's from the Spotsylvania website. That's where I got it. So to your comment that calls into question the character of the individual who made the comment, not my character.
I really find it difficult to not respond to that challenge. The math is simple. It's $11 million on a 450-plus million-dollar budget. I do not, never called into question anyone's integrity.
Record or flex?
I did not. I said everyone is entitled to an opinion. But the fact is, the fact of the matter is, it's less than 2.5%.
Glenn Burton, followed by Pamela Burton.
I would like my previous comments to be considered for this. I also just want to reiterate that you're considering 1,000 vehicle travels on one street right now that ends up at Piedmont. That Piedmont light will end up like Smith Station light, and that will back-go around back to Gordon Road, which will, I think, in my opinion, cause great harm to our schools, which is where my kids go, Smith Station and the Freedom Middle School. We just recently had an incident where they had to shut down that area. Now, what you're telling us is, we're going to add more to that area and still try to close it off and still try to proceed. I ask that you please look at the number, the impact in the middle schools as far as children are concerned. The way I see it, it was only 23, if I read that right, it was only 16 kids in a middle school. That averages to less than one kid coming per household to the middle school. I will have two myself in the middle school, just in my family, and a lot of professionals, when they come, most of the professionals I know have larger families than one kid. So I ask that you please look at your numbers and look at what you stated in all of the things that we said as taxpayers, as far as it goes with the utilities, the traffic, common open space, land that you're, the county's not going to be able to reuse. I ask that you look at this not from a personal level as I am speaking, but as a professional level in how this truly impacts our county. Thank you for your time.
Pamela Burton, followed by Michelle Freemiers.
Hi, I'm Pamela Burton. I live at 6836 Silverbrook Drive in the Ridgecrest Estates. Thank you for allowing us the time to be here tonight. In the opening prayer, you talked about cherish. What I cherish is my family and my children. I'm here to talk about the personal aspect. I'm a mom. I live right on Rolling Ridge, right there at the corner. The addition of 124 houses and the cars that it will bring in will greatly impact my family. My kids play outside. They're not indoor video game kids. They play outside, and I take pride in the fact that my kids enjoy that. They ride bikes, they ride scooters. We are outside all the time, and this, all these cars, I fear, will affect the safety of my children that I cherish very much.
Michelle Freemiers, followed by Patrick Freemiers.
Good evening again. My name is Michelle Freemiers. I'm at 6900 Nob Hill Court here in Spotsylvania in Livingston District. I would like my previous remarks from the other hearing to be made a party to this. I would like my previous remarks from the other hearing to be made a party to this, please. I was involved in a redevelopment in Prince William County. And as an attorney, as a member of the real estate community, I find the application from the developer to be woefully inadequate and disingenuous. And frankly, I'm not sure why we're all here tonight with the application being as incomplete as it is.
Thank you.
The process I was involved with, with Prince William, the developer took a very high interest in the neighboring landowners. And we worked very closely together with that development to come up, the developer, to come up with a plan that suited the neighbors around the development and the developer. And we ended up getting a really fantastic win-win for everyone. I don't feel that here. I feel like the application has been put forward, this has been called on almost a lame-duck session before the new board is put into place. And with the application being so wholly inaccurate, I wonder how the legal requirements for the county are that this is even being heard. Anyone have a response? I'm allowed to ask questions, I believe.
You're questioning the legality of this public hearing?
I am.
The application was submitted, I mean, that's just...
Right, but the Phase 1 study was not complete. The 45 acres that's being proffered to the county, we don't even know what 45 acres it is a part of, of the larger whole. So we don't know if that's taxable property to the county. I thought that all of those reports had to be in for the county to be able to make a complete and educated decision.
We haven't identified any issues with considering the public hearing. Obviously, we've identified issues with the proffer statement as Kim has presented, but we have not identified any issues to prevent the public hearing from going forward. Obviously, she stated, ma'am, you stated concerns about, you know, the various items and variables that the planning commission can consider and that the members can identify. But as far as the public hearing going forward, we haven't identified any issues.
Thank you.
Patrick Freemiers, followed by Paul Metzger.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Freemiers. I live at 6900 Nob Hill Court in Spotsylvania Livingston District. I would like my earlier comments brought forward to this hearing as well. I tend to agree, I believe, with most everyone who has spoken up here tonight, except for maybe one. This application appears to me completely ridiculous at this point. I didn't understand, even living with her, that the Phase 1 and the archaeological studies and all these things on this particular piece of land that is probably, or is considered as a proffer or possibly up for a proffer, haven't even been complete yet. So I feel at this point that this is a complete waste of everyone's time until the documentation is complete, or we just put this aside and maybe hear it when there's maybe more reasonableness in the room. I think it's disingenuous to try to compare averages of lot sizes when completely looking at the full 186-acre parcel and then compare those lot size averages when you can simply look at the map. The map doesn't lie. So when you talk about lot sizes and averages and what they compare to Bloomsbury, just take a look at the map. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Paul Metzger, 7103 Pineberry Court, Livingston District. I would like to have my previous comments also on the record for the zoning application. And I'm against the zoning. I think one of the things that needs to be considered here is that if the Comprehensive Plan Amendment is turned down and the zoning is turned down, the land, which by the way is stripped land, the previous owner timbered it, that land can still be developed. There is a by-right capacity to do that. So what we're really talking about here is simply a question of how many houses of what size will be placed on that land. It seems to me that Tricord, which recently purchased this property, I believe it was just a matter of a year or two ago, can still make a profit, a considerable profit, from exercising their by-right capacity. If they do so, we won't see 124 houses and all the congestion and problems that other people have spoken about. We'll see houses on two-acre lots. How many is uncertain at this time, but much more compatible with the surrounding rural community, and much less likely to have an adverse impact on traffic and on fiscal considerations and on the burden on county taxpayers. So I would urge Tricord and Mr. Jones to simply withdraw these requests and go about what they have a legal right to do. Go about developing the property in a by-right capacity, and I'm sure that they'll be able to do that and still achieve a considerable profit without having the adverse impact on all the surrounding neighbors and on the community of Spotsylvania in general. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, that's all for the sign-up sheet.
Please identify yourself.
Good evening again. I'm Kim Southern. I live at 9701 Pamela Court in Bloomsbury, and I spoke earlier. And I would like my words from the earlier hearing transferred here. I spoke from the heart, and I spoke on a personal level. I'd like to ask you all kindly, some of us are better public speakers than others, but everything I think we have to say here tonight is valid and important, and I hope you would take our sentiments into account rather than our public speaking abilities. Thank you.
Craig Robinson again, 7103 Hillwood Court. Liked to also have my earlier comments recorded. Again, I just asked three simple questions here. Where is the value for Spotsylvania County in this? Earlier, committee members said, you know, the 45 acres is a junk. Well, looking at the proposed overall plan, it has to be to the west of the development here. And looking at the topography, all I see are power lines, drainage areas, and wetlands. It's pretty straightforward right on the plat there. Secondly, it also, not only that, but you're talking about the 45 acres valued at almost $860,000. Not a sweet deal, in my opinion. Also, according to information that I was reading, the recently approved policy recommends developers pay $25,805 per detached home in rezoning proposals, and you're being offered $10,556. Again, doesn't sound like a sweet deal to me. And third of all, if you require pump stations and utilities as saying that's not a reasonable proposal for R1 zoning, you'd pretty much have to go to septic, and I'm not sure you could R1 zone with septic on, you know, less than a half-acre lot, putting in a septic system and such. Again, you're back to the two- or three-acre lots for rural zoning that's already currently affecting the neighborhoods, neighborhoods, neighborhoods surrounding that area. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, my name's James Sprinkle, 7215 Bloomsbury Lane, Livingston District. We're Bloomsbury residents. I'm a native Virginian, having grown up in South Side, Virginia, and we've been in this area for 20 years. We love living in Spotsylvania County. We have wonderful neighbors, neighborhoods, and schools. Rural character, open land and forests is a big part of that. The land in question was designated in the Comprehensive Plan as RU for good reasons, and I request to the board that it remain this way. Rezoning would allow construction of 124 houses in an area where all agreed that 10 seemed reasonable. Another cluster of tightly packed houses cannot be done right, considering multiple factors. If you look at this meeting tonight, comments on expanding the primary development area, sewage needs. Frankly, I find the comment flippant from the Tricord representative about the people knew the road was going to go through there, yes, for 10 houses, not 124 houses. Yeah, they knew it. And your comments about averaging...
If you could address your comments to the commission...
Well, okay. The comment, averaging the lot size per overall property is disingenuous. The acres, the 45 acres is not a gift. Smith Station Road can't handle the traffic and resources do not exist to update it. Traffic is already approaching a nightmare in our area. Any more traffic on our regional roads will degrade our quality of life further and will be the definition of poor planning. Please take every opportunity to deny Tricord's request and future similar requests. Otherwise, you will certainly continue to open quotes, quote-unquote, Fairfax our area. Population behind the carrying capacity of the road, strained resources, including law enforcement, overcrowded schools, potential lack of funds, loss of natural environment, the list goes on, including my doubts and questions about whether or not we'll have adequate fire hydrant water pressure. This Spring Grove plan on top of projects already slated for our county would continue the slow but steady march towards the featureless landscapes and endless traffic that are so familiar to the north of us. Human ant farm comes to mind. You have a choice. Please choose to keep this property zoned, RU, keep the rural part of our county just that. This is one of many opportunities to keep Spotsylvania County a place we love to live rather than a place we would like to leave. Thank you.
My name is Trevor Schrotz. I live at 6832 Silverbrook Drive in the Ridgecrest subdivision. I would like for my earlier comments on the Comprehensive Plan issue to be recognized in this hearing as well, please. I'm not going to repeat the points that I made earlier in total, but I would like to restate a couple of the conclusive points that I made. Requested Spring Grove zoning request changes made. This will pave the way for 124 homes to be constructed on the interior side of several adjacent neighborhoods, effectively creating an island of clustered homes in an area that is designated in the county's own Comprehensive Plan to remain a rural area for the foreseeable future. Earlier identified, all of the traffic from this development will flow through the peaceful Ridgecrest neighborhood, creating the aforementioned safety concerns via the interparcial connector. I implore you once again to keep the zoning as RU for the Spring Grove land intact and do not change the zoning, which would pave the way for an untenable amount of homes to be built. Thank you.
Jim Reed, Ashley Court. Point one, I'll just remind you again, the distance between homes will be the distance between that jam and that jam over there. And two, I've been doing the math again. How wide is the road? Somebody knows the width of the road? 22 feet. That's the distance between that arch right there and that arch right there, plus a foot, divided by two. I think there's around 1,200 vehicle trips a day, divided by 12-hour day, that's 100 vehicle trips an hour, which is, well, one every 40 seconds. Best I can tell, 300 cars have passed this way or that way in the span of this meeting. That is asking a lot for the poor folks. I don't know where you are, but you're asking a lot for those to have to dodge that much traffic in that period of time. Thank you.
I'm Mindy Eastlake. I live at 10409 Rolling Ridge Drive, Livingston District, and I oppose this rezoning. I could repeat a lot of what my neighbors are, and I'm honored to be here on their behalf, but I just want to point out one thing, that I've been sitting here for three hours, and not one person supports this. And as a citizen and a taxpaying person, I think you should listen to all of us in regards to, do we support your Comprehensive Plan in regards to keeping the area RU and maybe just put 10 houses in there so that we can keep our beauty of our county? Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else, welcome on.
Carlos Barrios. I live at 10314 Rolling Ridge Drive. I liked my prior comments to be part of this record as well. And I'd just like to go to what the gentleman over here with the glasses said. In essence, we would be creating one giant subdivision. And if you hadn't seen it, I'll be glad to bring this up for everyone to see. Here's Ridgecrest, I'm sorry, Ridgecrest Estates with Rolling Ridge Drive, and this is the cluster that wants to be, that's going to be built there on this tiny little road, one point in, one point out. I'll be glad to walk it around so everyone can have a good look at it if you want to. But that is what we're talking about. That is just far too much for that one little road and that small, small 16-home neighborhood. Thank you.
My name's Erin Sherwood. I live at 7109 Hillwood Court in the Livingston District, and I would like to adopt my earlier comments in the Comprehensive Plan hearing. One thing that I did agree on, I did agree with Mr. Jones, was it's the when and how. And this, tonight, we're talking about the how, because as it exists, we could have 10 higher-end, large-lot homes there, or we could be threatened, and I'm using that word meaningfully, threatened, because I think that that's what Mr. Jones was doing when he said, "If you don't do it now, you don't know what's coming. It's coming sooner than later." And I didn't hear any compromise whatsoever from Mr. Jones. What I heard were meaningless proffers. Oh, he will develop 124 lots out of a maximum of 124, and he considers that a proffer? The tree preservation line of 100 feet is a proffer? The land has been clear cut. There are no trees, and he calls it tree preservation, not tree planting, not creating a buffer. There is no buffer. It's clear cut. Meaningless. The trails, the county's got to maintain them. That's not a true proffer, and it's a trail to nowhere. The trash land. Interestingly, a point that hasn't been made tonight that's in Mr. Jones's proffer, if the county takes a pass on that land, which they should, Tricord can do whatever they want with it. And their proffer is $908,000 short? And that's if you buy the bogus property value of the 45 acres, the inflated property value. That's with that. Mr. Jones also said that, why hasn't Hollybrook affected the property values in Bloomsbury? Because it's not in my backyard. I don't look out my window and see it. It is on the other side of the street. Separate and distinct. That is a meaningless argument. And he did speak to the petitions and the value of them. And Mrs. Pomato, I would ask you to firm up some numbers. I gave you numbers earlier. I do think that they should probably be firmed up by someone other than myself. Confirm that, as well as the number of letters that have been delivered to each and every one of you, addressed to Mr. Stuber, but CC'd to each and every one of you. You know what your citizens and your neighbors are saying. And he challenged the information that was distributed, the map. The map that was distributed as part of the online petition is his GDP. The map that was distributed as part of the online petition is his GDP. His document is what was presented to the citizens, and they made an informed decision.
Thank you.
Barbara Robinson, 7103 Hillwood Court, Bloomsbury, Livingston District, and I would like what I said earlier to be carried over to this hearing, please. Mostly, I'm here, I want to reiterate, growing up in Virginia Beach. I love Virginia Beach. I love the ocean, but when I'm down there, it is horrible, horrible, the way the growth was just, you know, all these builders and developers would just come in and build and still are continuing to build everywhere. Reminds me of the Dr. Seuss story about the trees, where they tore down all the trees, and every time you go down there, there's more and more trees. So, we came here because we love this area. It's a beautiful place for our three sons and our daughter, who's still growing up, to be. I would love to see it continue that way. I'm not against growth, as long as it's sensible growth, and I don't see what this 124-house neighborhood, how it could benefit all of us. And also, my children played in their own yard and their own woods, and we bought in this area because it was rural, and I hope that the next person that buys my home will be fortunate enough to have their children play in the woods that we own and pay taxes on, not trespass on other people's law yard.
Good evening to you. Glenn Shelton, 10807 Cedar Post Lane in Hollybrook. Certainly hoping the comment Mike Jones made about us degrading was-
You're forgiven.
Okay. I've been there since July of 91, okay? And the only thing I got to say, I am not against development. I work for a local developer and contractor. I make my house payment by this. I may have car payments by this, but it's just in the wrong place. We're out of the plans on. Just nothing. Government is for the people, and I don't know about you guys, I can't hear a whole lot, but I haven't heard anything but Mr. Mike saying he's for it, and nobody else in this room but him, so that's all I ask you guys, just reconsider.
According, 10,000 North Harris Farm Road and Bloomsbury Estates. Again, I'd just like to say, you know, as a professional, we relocated down here to be within distance of the places that we need to work, and that these communities that are in question are the communities we came to, and that was part of the reason we came here, and putting a cluster home in the middle of this will definitely decrease the ability for you to attract professional, successful people to these communities, because we won't have a place to live anymore.
My name's Matt Whitehurst. I moved into 9904 South Harris Farm Road just three and a half months ago, so I'm very new. What I love to see and, you know, what I'm passionate about here is the longevity of everyone in this room. You know, average people move into a home and they leave seven, eight years somewhere in that neighborhood. Don't quote me on this, because my facts aren't exactly, but, you know, these folks have been here and they've raised their family here. They're passionate about this neighborhood, and that's important. And you put density homes in there, I don't think you're going to get that passion that's in this room here. And, you know, it's important, and I'm envious of your jobs, actually, because you get to plan a community, you get to oversee something special, not just numbers on a spreadsheet. And if you look at all your experts here, you know, they're passionately against this. And so, I mean, if you can't just outright deny this, then, you know, I think you need to get at least some more information, but I think you have tons of evidence to just outright say, "No. Just no." And, you know, we don't want to put mansions everywhere. That's not the kind of people we are. We just want a community, and we want to be able to drive to work and not sit in traffic lights, and we want our kids to be able to go outside, and just, you know, it's the little things. And so, again, if I could, I don't know if I'm the last one to speak, but just look at that map. This gentleman, is that it correct? Just look at this map. I want development just as much as the next person. My brother's a developer. He develops land in Maryland, and there's a responsibility to it. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, they want to build homes and make money, and that's fine, but we look to you to be the middle ground, because there's nothing written in stone about this. We're looking to you, and we're looking at the map and we're looking to you. And I look at the map and I'm looking to you. Thanks.
The last gentleman made a very good point about the complexity of this issue, and did Mr. Jones was to comment about the many things that have been raised?
Chairman, I won't comment about the many things, but I will comment on just a few very quickly. I've heard a lot about the amount of traffic coming feeding through one road. I think first, to understand, there's actually two ways into here, Silverbrook and Rolling Ridge Road into the subdivision, but I find it interesting that Bloomsbury is, has 153 houses on one entrance. Hollybrook has 608 on two entrances. Cambridge has 139 on one entrance. Breckenridge has 274 on one entrance. Stony Brook has 498 on two entrances. So, I don't feel that what we're proposing in that regard is outside the norm and is something that's been proven to work in other areas. In regards to the claim that there's no trees to be buffered, the area we've proposed to put a buffer, the reason we've done that is because that area was not timbered. It's a beautiful tree, mature hardwood trees that were left, and so, we've, there is a legitimate area to be buffered there, and that's what we've, where we've put the tree buffer. The connector road was not an indication of our intention to develop the neighboring property. We would rather not do that. As you know, that's a requirement of VDOT. It has to be on those plans. We don't get a say in that. I think I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions? So, then, as was noted, there's numerous questions that have come up, and if it's the will of the commission, we'd like to keep the public hearing open so that we can address further these issues in two weeks, unless there's a specific feeling otherwise or emotion in another manner. So, the chair will entertain a motion to keep the public hearing open and that we will allow for further discussions and clarifications to occur in the next two weeks. This is a commission matter, and it's not for the public.
No, ma'am, it's-
Well, I'd like to put on the record that we would ask-
No, again, ma'am.
-until the new panel, the new commission is impaneled before this matter is continued.
Just for the record, there's only two commission members departing. I don't understand what the big brouhaha is.
You're not one of them.
There you go. I really, we really appreciate that vote of affirmation. So, the motion has been, is there a motion?
You just made it.
No, I said I'd entertain one.
Oh.
Related to continuing it so that it would come-
So moved.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, let's proceed to a vote. A vote yes continues this to the next meeting so that the applicant and staff can further iron out potential solutions. It is six to one in favor of the continuation. So, that being concluded, the only, the next item on the agenda is scheduling another public hearing, I think.
Yes. Before you is a draft amendment to the zoning ordinance, and this is one of these amendments that is required in order to bring our ordinance in line with the Code of Virginia. There was a recent change related to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they now need to make eight affirmative findings in order to approve zoning variance requests. So, what we're doing is bringing our ordinance in line, so we'd like the Planning Commission to authorize a public hearing, and we would bring this before you at your next meeting.
So, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
For second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Without question, let's vote. It is unanimous, and the public hearing is authorized. Next item on the agenda is an opportunity for public comment related to matters unrelated to the public hearings. Very well, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Old business, no, new business. Old business was a long time ago.
Oh, okay.
That's still coming up. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. Proceed to a vote. It is unanimous, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.